Okay, let's get started. The Board of Selectmen just came out of executive session discussing strategies relative to litigation. And now we're proceeding to the next item in our agenda, which is a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and School Committee. And I see this joint session as kind of a check-in, a summary of some of the things we've heard, a check-in with the boards, kind of take a temperature of the boards, see where we are, and see how we're going to proceed and get us to the next stage. I did not come into this meeting expecting that the boards take any votes. I don't have any votes prepared, but, you know, anything can happen. So I'd first like to turn it over to, well, unless Susan wants this thing.
No, let's go.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Cara Bruton.
Great, thanks. So my name's Cara Bruton, I'm the Economic Development Director for the town in the Planning and Community Development Department. What I thought I would do is just spend about 10 minutes recapping some of the comments we've heard. Some of these are the same slides that you all showed at the public hearing, and there's a couple more bullet points, including comments that we heard from different commissions and committees, which you may have not seen that yet. And all of you do have a, by email, all of the comments that were emailed to us through the website, which is about 100 pages of comments. So I'm not going to go through all 100 pages, this is meant to be a high-level summary. And then after I speak about what we've heard, Joe Connolly is going to go over a couple slides about enrollment projections and kind of diving into what does the no decision decision look like? What happens if we make no decision? So where we are, this slide most of you have seen before. Both boards are committed to a very transparent process. Civic Moxy was hired to deliver a data-driven report, where there was 26 sites with a detailed study, including concept plans for six of those sites. Everything's been publicly released, except for the cost information, to protect the town's negotiating position if we were to acquire private property. And we are still, even tonight, you know, in public input phase. I continue to get comments, and we'll forward those as we receive them. But the public hearing, you know, was finished up a couple weeks ago. So ideally, what the big-picture process going forward is continued study phase through January of next year, some kind of due diligence phase through the winter and probably summer of next year, hopefully a decision phase by next fall, and then beginning schematics, which is where we usually begin kind of the school planning process. So that'd be after a site selection, that's fall, winter of next year. And then working through what that means is that fastest we could move would be construction starting in September 2020. So what we've heard, the most frequent comments, we can't put them all up here, but the most frequent ones are, you know, excitement that we're digging in and looking at possible ninth school sites, consensus from most people that a ninth school is needed, a lot of comments about wanting clarity in what the process is going to be in the next couple months, weeks, months, and over the next year. We have heard a desire to slow down the timing of any decision-making. We've heard comments about wanting clarity on the introduction of the high school with the ninth school, and also whether or not the town and school committee believe we need a three-section or four-section ninth elementary school. The Civic Moxy study scope was for a three-section school. And then a desire to consider sites beyond the two initially kind of pointed towards, or even beyond the 26 that were looked at by Civic Moxy. And Pine Manor has been one of the sites that's the most frequently brought up as a site we should maybe go back to and look at. So specifically from the Advisory Committee, there was a desire to see the cost in the executive session, and we're going to be doing that later this week. They are our finance board. They also expressed wanting to know clarity about the interaction between high school needs and this project, and a desire for more data analysis, separating not just the quarter-mile walking distance, but also half-mile, three-quarters of a mile for each school in each scenario. The Preservation Commission gave us some great specific comments, starting with Cottage Farm. They confirmed what we had heard from staff, which is that demolition of any houses in the Cottage Farm local historic district would not likely be approved, that any driveway access that connected through to Mason Square to, say, Ivy Street or Cottage Farm Road would not likely be approved. They did say that they would like to see more space between the existing homes in Cottage Farm and the proposed school, so meaning more buffer, more setback between the old and the new structures. They also would want to see further study, like taking sections, if you think about taking a section from Amory up from Nyvett Square up to Mason Square through the site, and looking at existing homes on Amory Road as kind of a height reference in understanding what the profile would look like of a ninth elementary school. They did express a willingness to consider flat roofs rather than, you know, pitched roofs everywhere, and they also wanted to better understand the building form that was being proposed. In the study, it's very conceptual, it says two-to-three-story over parking, and they were asking questions like, what does that look like? Is it a building on stilts with drop-off underneath? How does that fit in? How is that compatible with the neighborhood? Regarding the Isabel School, their main comment there was that the Boston-Brookline boundary, and what at the time was the proposed use restriction boundary that was subject to Fall Town Meeting, seemed like it was overly restricting the best site outcome there, that it was driving that design. On Walnut Street, which includes Old Lincoln School as well as the U-Haul site, they asked us to consider an alternative concept study that includes demolishing or maybe even relocating the residential garage off Walnut Street. So if you remember in the concept plan, when you look at that site, you'll see a big jog around that garage, that's a residential home's garage, that's part of a local historic district. We went around that building with the understanding that the Preservation Commission would be very unlikely to decide to demolish any structure in a local historic district. They seemed willing to take a look at this, they pointed us in that direction. No promises, no decisions, but just take a look at it. We saw the Conservation Commission. What we heard from them was that any use of existing parks by schools, especially additional added school, needs would be taken away from their existing overstressed park needs. A lot of them have, a lot of our parks have maintenance problems already because of the use that they're already under stress. And a more kind of taking a step back, that if we're thinking about adding capacity for the schools, we should be at the same time as a town, thinking about adding capacity for the parks, that the two go hand in hand, and that both are very important and under a lot of stress. They expressed a concern about developing undeveloped space, this is especially with regards to the Cottage Farm site. Even though we were looking at, you know, privately-owned parcel, that doesn't mean that tree cover and undeveloped space isn't important, especially when it's adjacent to the Amory Playground in Amory Woods parcels. They did point in having more interest in looking more carefully at some of the urban sites or already-developed sites, for example TJ Maxx, Old Lincoln School, and the Stop and Shop site. And as far as kind of data analysis, they would really like to know the single best location in town, you know, if it could just be theoretical, what's the best location in town that would increase the most walkability, whether it's one of the six sites or even another site. The Parks and Open Space Commission, I believe you all have received, at least by email, a letter that they submitted to the boards, these are just some bullet points, that similar to the Conservation Commission's thoughts, any use of existing parks by schools is taking away from the overstressed existing park situation, needing to add capacity for both at the same time. Planning for the high school needs at the same time as we do the ninth elementary school, and they especially pointed to 111 Cypress Street as something that we should be considering sooner than later. And also considering Pine Manor or other large parcel owners for the ninth school, and if that doesn't work out, pointing us towards the Lincoln School or the Village School without the grocery store. They also asked that the town consider bundling the ninth school study with a strategic asset plan and the major parcel study, and finally requested from the commission, requesting a formal role in the decision-making process. So away from the boards and kind of going back to the many comments that we've heard in open houses that we've been in, specifically to Cottage Farm, what we've heard, effect on the neighborhood, on the neighbors in the neighborhood, significant concern about eminent domain, especially in this location, and especially following the Mass Association for the Blinds expressing the opposition of a school at this site, whether or not there's any property acquisition from them. Secondly, the effects on open space in the environment, including Amory Playground, Halls Pond, Amory Woods, lots of private green space, the fact that that whole area used to be former swamp, reporting of flooding and structural issues in the neighborhood, traffic, especially on Amory, local historic district issues, which we've talked about with the Preservation Commission slide, and the idea that it's a space-constrained site. So if we're thinking about something more than a three-section school, does it make sense to try to fit it all on this site? With the Isabel School, on Lars Anderson, we've heard about the issue of likely use restrictions, including but not limited to the 1970s grant that was, we've discussed a lot, and that would probably require political, at least political if not legal reasons, to acquire additional property for park use if we were to move forward with the Isabel School. Open space issues, more generally, the effect of a school on or near Lars Anderson Park. The location, that this site is on the edge of town, we heard a lot from people talking about how it does not have, especially that side of the park does not have great pedestrian or bike amenities to or from the site, and that there are not many households within a quarter-mile radius of where the school was shown to be sighted. Traffic, in addition to not having public transit in the area, many comments about all of the other academic institutions that are in the immediate area, whether in Brookline or Boston. And then the Village School, which is the Stop and Shop site, we did hear kind of mixed comments about whether we should look at that site with or without a grocery store, whether or not that's a community resource in itself, that we should assume stays in place. There's, I would say, some interest in doing further analysis as a potential solution at the Village School. And we also heard, and I believe in the audience tonight, concern from the condo owners, especially on St. Paul condos, about the vehicular and pedestrian access that is shown on the concept plan through their property, in the concept plan that was in the study. And then finally, more generally in South Brookline, I did see some stickers again tonight, yes, we're sobro, South Brookline would like to see more school capacity. We've received mixed comments on how close to the existing Baker School that capacity should be. So kind of a general statement that yes, South Brookline is where they would like to see more school capacity. So I'm going to turn this over to Joe to talk about the no decision decision, the consequences if we don't make a ninth school.
Joe Connolly, the interim superintendent of schools. As Cara mentioned a moment ago, the need for ninth schools seems pretty well-established, but as we looked at these studies for the past few months, the Civic Moxy report did base its needs on an enrollment projection that was done perhaps a year ago, and this year, we started the process by doing another enrollment projection, so we'd have the most updated numbers possible. And so what I'm going to share with you right now is the most updated enrollment projections that not only justify the need for a ninth school, but it also points out the impact if we don't realize that ninth school within the next five or six years. So looking at that, this first slide here, what I did is I took a five-year look back, this is for the past five years and five years looking forward. You can see from 2010 to this year, 2015, the enrollment has increased from 4652 to 5,466. That's an increase of 814 students in the K-8 schools. Moving forward, five years out, from 2015 to 2021, enrollment is projected to increase from 5,466 to 6,193. That's an increase of 727 students. So clearly, the enrollment increase is not slowing down, it's maintaining that same momentum the past five years, the next five years. Same thing is happening at the high school. There's been a 200-pupil increase in the last five years, and it's projected to increase by 451 students from the current 1946 to 2397, five years out. The total enrollment is projected, has increased over 1,000 students in the past five years, and is projected to increase another over 1,000 students in the next five years. So what happens? Right now, in 2015, 2016, we have 255 K-8 classrooms in our eight schools. System-wide, the average class size is 21. But we all know that's not mathematically possible to always have 21 in every class, so the existing, this year, the existing range in those 255 K-8 classrooms is a low of 17 and a high of 27. We only have seven classes, system-wide, from those 255 classes, that have 25 or higher students. So all things considered, currently in Brookline, we're in pretty good shape. But with that growth projected over the next five years, what happens if the impact, what would the impact be if we do not realize a ninth school within the next five or six years? The 2020-21 average class size, at 6,193 divided by 260 classes, and additional five classes will come online over the next few years, the average class size would be 24. But that projects out to a class-size range of 20 to 31 students. The seven classes this year that have 25 or more classes is projected to be 70 classes in five years of 25 or more students. So clearly, the need for ninth school is critical. The next slide pretty much explains what's happening here in Brookline. This is our current 2015-2016 enrollment by grade. You can see in kindergarten through grade four, where we exceed 600, we actually have 704 students in grade three. So clearly, in the first five or six grades this year in Brookline, we're averaging well over 650 students per grade. You go to the last five years, grades eight through 12, you can see we're averaging 500, 500, 507, 480, 459, we're averaging about 490 students. So what's happening, and this happened this past June, we graduated 450 students in June, and this September, we brought in 633 kindergarten students. So we're realizing a 200-pupil increase, just with the graduating class versus the incoming kindergarten class. So clearly, the need is there, and it's going to continue to be there. And the final slide I have tonight takes those numbers, and it breaks it down into classes, what we need. Right now, the school committee recommended class size is in grades K to three, we hope to, we try to have no more than 22 students in a class in K-3. And in grades four through eight, we try to stay at 25 or less. Based on those numbers, 25 grades four to eight, and 22 grades K to three, with the numbers we have this year, 255 classes, we have a need for 259, we have two modules at Baker, and we have three rentals here at Pierce. We have a shortfall this year of really five classes, we have one extra room at Lawrence School, so we have a shortfall of four classes this year. That was addressed by the two modules and the rental space at Pierce. Looking at next year, we have the same 255 classrooms available, we have a need for 265 classes, so we're facing a shortfall of 10 classes next year. That breaks down, Devotion School is going to need an additional grade five, they have four sections of, five sections of fourth grade going into four sections of fifth grade. So we need an additional fifth grade at Devotion, we need an additional seventh grade at Lawrence, we need an additional fourth grade at Pierce, and we need an additional eighth grade at Heath. And also at Heath, we have a projected class size of 72 students in grade two for three sections. That would be three sections of 24, starting the year in September at Heath. So there's a possibility we might need two classrooms at Heath. So right now, we're visiting these schools, we're trying to solve the solution of how we can find five additional classes. The good news is that Lawrence has a classroom available, the Rockwell School has a classroom available, and Devotion, because it's also at the Old Lincoln School, has a classroom available. But Lawrence and Pierce, it's going to be a challenge for us to find an additional classroom for next year in those schools. Some of the solutions we've been using, short-term solutions until a ninth school can come online, is additional modulators, additional rental space, especially at Pierce. We have this building right next to the Pierce School, 62 Harvard Street, is an ideal location for us to add classrooms. We've added three this year, we'd like to add maybe four, an additional classroom on that third floor next year. Maintenance Department has been very clever and very successful at taking existing space within a school, splitting it up and creating classrooms. Unfortunately, when they do that, they're substandard space. It's not the 900-square-foot classroom, many times with windows. It creates a classroom, but they're substandard space. And the other real solution will be quite, over the next five years until a ninth school comes online, is we'll more than likely be facing increased class size. As I mentioned in that first slide, this year, we only have seven classes that have 25 or more students. If we don't find additional space, and if a ninth school doesn't come online within five years, we could have upwards of 70 classes that would exceed 25 students to a classroom. So clearly, the need is there, we're being very creative about trying to address those needs now, but we're running out of solutions. We feel the best solution is a ninth school. Thank you very much.
So that's kind of what we're up against, and it's why we're here. And I think the goals of the current phase are to identify kind of what kind of analysis and what kind of deal breakers are there for each of the sites, and then decide at the end of this phase, and that's not going to happen tonight, which sites we're going to start spending money and studying further. So the first thing I'd like to talk about, one of the things that came out during the open houses especially, is, and we saw it here, that when we bring the school online, we've been focusing on a three-section school, that school is going to be full. So should we be looking at a four-section school? And I don't even know if that's possible, given some of the issues that we've been running into. So do you have any thoughts on that?
So a couple thoughts. I mean, first of all, just to echo one thing that Cara said, I mean, there is a lot of excitement that we've heard over the last couple of months. I think people really appreciate the fact that when we debuted this in October, October 22nd, that we, you know, that we're all united in wanting to build a great school in Brookline. I think, you know, Brookline values education that has come through in all of the forums, even people who have disagreements with one piece or another have just restated that value of education, and the desire and commitment to investing in it. So I think that's great, and I don't want to lose it, because I think a lot of things that we end up talking about feel like zero-sum game kind of conversations, and I just don't want to lose the fact that so many people have expressed excitement that we are, that we're doing this, and that there's unified commitment. that we are, that we're doing this, and that there's unified commitment to do it. I think the other thing that I heard was that there's just a lot of opportunity here to do something interesting and exciting, and that while there's no silver bullet, there might be opportunities for some of these sites to, to do things differently. And I think there's a lot of openness that I've heard on the Board of Selectmen, on the school committee, I've heard it on advisory, I've heard it in many of the committees that we've talked to, there have been five or six of them at this point, that, that we can do something interesting, exciting. So that's great. I think the other thing is that those consensus about the need is real. You know, we are already overflowing our K-8 classrooms into rentals. It's not like that's a new idea for us to start thinking about pursuing, going for it. Like, we're already there. And a lot of people consider that kind of a line, once we crossed it, that it meant something. Same thing with increasing class size. We've already increased class size. We've increased it further, but just a number of those steps have already been taken. And so I think just the appreciation for where we are has led to, yes, there have been lots of comments, there, people don't like one thing or another, but just the overall tone, especially on some of the community dialogues, on the Facebook page, in the meetings, there really has been some positive momentum, and I just want to make sure that we all keep that front and center as well. I mean, on the question of, you know, three versus four sections, I mean, I think if we look at the, the slide that Dr. Connelly put up at the end, you know, that, the slide about the classroom need, which then ends with whatever it is, a deficit of roughly, you know, twenty-seven classrooms, twenty-seven classrooms, if you think about it, is three per grade for a K-8 building, so three times nine is twenty-seven. So a twenty-seven classroom deficit technically is three sections. That's what we call sections or three in a grade. And I think the, this, I just want to be really clear, and underscore a couple of things Dr. Connelly said about that number, which is, number one, that does not assume that we're bringing beeps back into the buildings. We have, Mary Ellen, help me out, eleven beeps out in rental spaces right now. We have eleven pre-K classrooms out in rental space. We have a vision for a pre-K through eight system. So there are eleven sections that are not in the buildings, they're not in that number. This doesn't put our class size back at where it's historically been in the, in the twenty range. It, it leaves it higher than, than it's been. You know, those twenty-seven do not fix the suboptimal problem. Suboptimal is a funny word, but it's, some of them actually impact the education that kids are getting. Some of them are just small classrooms and, you know, but it doesn't fix any of that. It doesn't address the fact that we've now, this year, put adults into rental space on Webster Place. And I don't remember exactly how many adults there are in the neighborhood of forty?
Forty.
Forty, adults in rental space, coming out of our buildings to make room for classrooms. It doesn't include what I would consider a worst-case forty-B scenario. So there are all kinds of things that, that are new developments, basically, more, even more children, has some moderate assumptions in there. So the bottom line is that, you know, twenty-seven is a floor, not a ceiling, that a twenty-seven section school would absolutely be full, as the Chair of Board of Selectmen just said, when we open it. And, and I just want to be clear that the, the three versus four-section building, I mean, four sections doesn't solve the problem either. So I think where we've been on this, I mean, I think the number to actually bring all of that back in is closer, as we said to the advisory committee a couple of months ago, to having a ninth elementary school and having a second ninth elementary school, right? So what, somehow the word tenth elementary school is too terrifying, so I've called it the second ninth elementary school. And some people in the community have thought about that as a North and a South Brookline piece. The growth is everywhere, the need is everywhere, it's not in either North Brookline or in South Brookline, it's in both. But I think we've all been really committed to a couple of very pragmatic principles as well, which is, number one, we want to build a great school, and what we don't want to do is constrain either the consultant or our own thinking to saying, you absolutely must find room for a four-section school, because that still leaves things, especially if it's not going to be a really great school, that still leaves, you know, kids in rentals or parent, or adults in rentals, and we get a fourth school that we're not, a four-section school that we're not really excited about. So I think the conversation to date has been, let's be open-minded, and if we can figure out a way to get a great three-section school, then let's do that. And, you know, the, the kids who are in rental spaces right now, they're beautiful spaces. They're not exactly our vision for a pre-K through eight model, but it's working. The building department's made it work, Charlie Simmons has made it work, Mary Ellen Dunn, our Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Administration, has made it work. We have so many people making it work that, you know, we are willing to be pragmatic and realistic. If, if someone said, here are two elementary schools, that would be terrific. But given the fact that we're doing a very large devotion project, we absolutely need at least one ninth elementary school, and we have a high school project on the horizon, and we have very pressing needs in terms of renovation of the Pierce Building, you know, the Pierce School and other things, I just, I really wanted people to understand some of the richness behind the three versus four-section discussion. And so, bottom line is, if we can get a great four-section school, that would be great. But I at least, and others should weigh in, am not willing to say it has to be a four-section school at the cost of maybe getting something that would be a great three-section school and, you know, figuring out how to deal with the rentals for a slightly more medium-term kind of approach. So I don't know if that answers the question, but hopefully gives a little bit more color as to how we're thinking about, how we're thinking about that question.
Anyone want to add anything? Yeah? Ms. Scotto.
I, I just want to agree with Ms. Ditko about the fact that we don't know whether we're going to be able to do what we want to do with one school, that we will probably need two schools. I think when you're thinking about three-section versus four-section, from an educational point of view, you need to think about establishing a community within the school and within the grade level. And as schools get bigger, it is more and more difficult to do the kind of community development that you want to have happen in that school. So while I don't think we can eliminate the notion of four-section schools, ideally, in my mind, we would do two, three-section schools. Now, that's, in a, in a sense, pie in the sky right now, because as Ms. Ditko said, we also have the high school. And trying to add three new facilities over a relatively short period of time may be something that we, as a town, aren't able to do. Partly, it depends on whether the MSBA helps us, but it also means people would really have to have a commitment to do that. So I, like Susan, think that I'm not willing at this point to say, yes, it has to be a four-section, or yes, it has to be a three-section, because we may be driven to do for a four-section school, but in my mind, two, three-section schools would be much more ideal.
Well, we're looking for the site for one school.
Right. No, I know. Exactly.
So, yeah, another thing that affects the timetable, and I don't, we're not going to make a decision about this tonight, but, you know, the process we've been following is not the MSBA process, and it, it, it almost assumes that we're not going to be seeking MSBA assistance with the ninth school project. If, if we did seek MSBA assistance, it would probably set us back at least one, possibly two, possibly three years, and I don't think we can wait that long. Yeah. Well, okay. Ms. Jackson.
Before we go down the road of MSBA, I just want to understand, because I'm not remembering, of the six sites, can any accommodate a four-section school? I'm not clear on the statement, we might not be able to get a, I mean, I get the sort of community-sized piece that Ms. Scotto referenced, but in terms of being able to hold a four-section school, are any of those sites? We've argued the cottage farm is not, but...
Well, we would have to examine that further, I think, because the, the site plans and the civic moxie report were for a three-section.
For three, they were all three.
And, and some of the sites were more constrained than, than others. Ms. Helen?
Yeah, I want to say something else about MSBA and, and the fact that it's going to set us back, or if we follow the process, it's going to push back the, the project at least a year. The problem is also the likelihood of our getting it. And it used to be that MSBA would entertain applications on more than one project from a community, but they've tightened the rule on that in the past few years, and they're much less likely to go forward with more than one, certainly not more than two projects. And we've got so many on the horizon that it might make sense to just say, okay, let us bite the bullet and do this one on our own, knowing that, A, it's, it will advance the time, and B, we're unlikely to get it, and we also have the high school, and maybe another elementary school, and other renovations, say Pierce, et cetera. So we have other projects that we're going to want to, to submit, most likely, especially once devotion gets done. So maybe we need to put our apples in the basket of, let's not worry about MSBA at this point, because of the likelihood, likelihood is we wouldn't get it anyway.
Right. And, and we're not going to make a decision on that now. I just wanted to float publicly the notion that it is a possibility that we wouldn't be seeking MSBA participation in this project, and, but, but we'll be further analyzing that in the coming months, and some of this, of course, will depend on what happens with the high school, where we have sought MSBA participation, and we haven't yet heard what's happening with that.
Just to put it into context, this is, I mean, when, when a town is considering multiple building projects of any kind, there is always a consideration of where can we get help? If we get help for one of those or two of those projects, does that affect the other ones? So this is, this isn't a new idea that we, you know, would or would not go to the MSBA for this particular project. Newton, for example, just was in a position of renovating, I think, three or four of their schools, and had MSBA participation with at least one, probably, I think maybe even two, but, but certainly that was a, they knew that they had a four-project problem to deal with, and, and it's the, that's a town conversation, and that's a conversation this town would have about how we go about financing, once we've established what the actual need is. So, to the point of establishing what the actual need is, I think that gets back to the point about, you know, the, the three-section versus four-section school. That's not really the conversation we're having right now. We're having a conversation about how this town meets the needs that we have. I think the staff has done a fabulous job of putting the need out there in black and white for us, and that's what we're looking at. So it's not going to get solved if we answer the three versus four, it's not going to get solved, or if we answer tonight the MSBA or not MSBA. We've really got to look at this as a whole set of issues and a set of needs, and the size of that need, and how we're going to address it in a comprehensive way.
Right. And then just the only other point I would make about the MSBA is that, you know, at some point, and again, it's not going to be tonight, but, you know, we will hear about the high school. If the high school is not accepted, that means that they're not willing to partner with us this year, and we'll find out in the next number of weeks, then we'll have to make a decision about whether we resubmit the high school as our top priority, or whether we move away from that. And again, as, as I said on the twenty-second, and I said in our public hearing, and I'll say it again, I have not heard anyone in dozens of public meetings at this point suggest that we would do anything except resubmit the high school. And if that's right, then that's where you kind of push off this project as an MSBA potential project even further. And if we did resubmit the high school, there, we are very, very constrained on what we are allowed to do without the MSBA's partnership. So if we, if we want to seek it, and we want them to be a funding partner, they like to be a decision-making partner also, they require being a decision-making partner also. So when we've gotten the question of, well, how does the high school fit into this, you know, the answer is, we need to make a decision about our role vis-à-vis the MSBA, and they need to make a decision about how, about, about what they want to do with us before we can answer those questions. Because even questions like, is this going to be one high school or two high schools, you know, that sort of thing, they, they want to be part of that process, and if we want their funding, they require that. And so we're actually not able to have those discussions until, until we hear back from them. So that might answer a different question that you're getting to on your list.
Ms. Stram?
I just wanted to build off of something that Ms. Stone just said. I, I agree that, that right now, I don't think it's helpful to make the three versus four decision, because every site that we're looking at has so many other factors that could knock that site out, that I just don't think that that's helpful at this point. But what I do think is helpful is, going forward, if we could look at each site as a package, as opposed to an individual site. So not, in, in every scenario, in every site, there are other things that we are likely going to have to do to solve the whole problem. So let's just say we choose a site in North Brookline that can only accommodate a, a three-section school, then therefore, we will either have to find an additional site that, that can accommodate another three-section school, or expand in place in South Brookline, or whatever it is. But I feel like we need to get a, before we can actually move forward with the decision, we need to get a sense of what does the whole package look like when we choose the site. And that would be very helpful to me. And I also think that putting that package into the context of some scenario planning would be helpful. So we have identified one scenario that we believe to be the most likely, and it makes sense to plan around that, but there's always what if we're wrong? This could be too high, this could be too low. And understanding in that situation, you know, what, what other options would we exercise if, if, you know, we overestimate enrollment? Well, we could bring beeps back. What other options would we exercise? If we underestimate enrollment, we could use old Lincoln, et cetera, et cetera. So really understanding, as we move forward in the decision-making, what does the full package look like, and, and what are, you know, high, medium, and low scenarios in, in this package, I think, as a decision-maker, would be very helpful.
Yeah, I, I also think, and this takes into account some of the themes we've heard in the comments, on how, you know, each site has its own set of issues and, and problems. And I, I, we, we, I think we need to take a very broad look on how perhaps we can accommodate some of the green issues and open space issues, and, and that should be part of our package and, and, and looking at that. Now, some of the sites, you know, we, there's going to be trade-offs, and that's, that's actually, you know, one of the, one of my observations. You know, I'm, I'm fully aware that, and I think the rest of the members of both boards are aware, that this is, in reality, a hundred-year decision. This is, this is a decision that's going to affect the town for a long, long time. And we, we have competing issues here. You know, we have, we have a problem we're trying to solve that's up, up on the screen, and, and we have a timeframe in which we need to move towards solving it, and for each year, we miss the deadline, you know, there, there are consequences. And, and, and each site has its own set of issues, and I think there's, there's no perfect site. As, as we've started examining the sites and hearing from the public and, and doing our own additional analysis, you know, every site has issues, every site has compromises, every site affects the neighbors, every site potentially affects green space. And, and, and in, in, in the end, I think, no matter what, what we do and what, what site we choose in the end, I think we're going to have to do the best we can to balance all the competing concerns, and, 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 and make a decision that we think is in the best interest of the town. And, and I predict that no decision is going to make everybody happy, and we're going to have to accept that. So. What I'd like to do is move on and just talk about some of the sites and, and some of the things we've heard, and, and think about, you know, what do we need to do to, to, to get us to, to the, to the next phase with, with respect to each site? So, so far, we've, we've set things up so that the, the community would primarily focus on Cottage Farm and, and, and the so-called Isabel Site. By, you know, putting our fingers on the scale, in a sense, in... a sense and saying that these were our initial preferred sites. And because we did that, we kind of hung back and didn't do, we didn't get as much public comment on some of the sites and we didn't dig deeper on some of those sites, you know, after the report came out. So maybe I'll go through the sites one by one and I'll be interested in hearing thoughts. And I'll start with Cottage Farm. The thing that hit me, in addition to all the things we've heard from the community, is how, with especially the preservation restrictions, that site is going to be difficult to build on. And if we were to proceed, we would need to do, with that site, we would need to do further site analysis, taking into account the preservation restrictions that we heard, consideration of the landowners, especially the MAB. You know, one of the things we could look at if we were to proceed is, you know, whether we could reconfigure the site so that it doesn't use that land. And but what I'm going to suggest is that we look at some of the other sites to see if some of the other sites are, some of our sites in the lower tiers are, whether we can move them up into the upper tier. So that's what I'm, that's the way I'm thinking right now. Anyone have any thoughts? By all means.
Well, with the understanding of, again, the goal, we're not voting sites on or off the island right now. All we're doing is sort of saying, what are the kinds of, given the feedback we've heard, given the conversations we've been having, what are the kinds of considerations that are on people's minds? Because I think, again, this was heading towards a discussion in January where we would try to say, all right, for the next phase of analysis and due diligence, we would want to invest funds to do further analysis on the sites that we think are, you know, that we think are worth spending more money to do analysis on. So this is not a decisions conversation, it's a what is striking to you and what are the important considerations and potential deal breakers? Rebecca looks like she has thoughts.
No, I have more questions, like almost everybody in the room right now, I have more questions than thoughts on most of this. So I don't really know what the, I don't know that we have a consensus on even what a deal breaker would be, whether or not, so I don't know whether or not we've heard any deal breakers for any of the sites that we're looking at. We've certainly heard some major concerns with some of the sites we looked at. And I think in some cases, I've had the response of, that's a deal breaker. And in some cases, I've had the response of, we should really press on that and dig a little deeper on what's actually the case. So just for example, the idea of the stability of the land at the, for the Cottage Farm site, right? That was an interesting new development in the conversation, that it would be more difficult to build a large building on that site. I was interested in pushing that a little bit more, just to see how much of an impediment it was. The Conservation Commission comments and the Preservation Commission comments, I think, again, give us some interesting things to think about. I don't know if we lined all of those up, the things that they, they said we should, that they would be willing to consider, the things that they would not be willing to consider, whether or not that takes anything off the table or sort of, so my question is, what are the pieces of what we've heard that suggest looking more closely? Or do we have a working definition of what a deal breaker is for any of the sites?
And I think that's what we're going to be looking at in the next month.
In the next, okay.
In the next month or two, you know, it's somewhere in that time.
That's what we are hiring or before we go to the?
That's the, yes.
Okay.
Because, you know, there's going to be a limited pool of money.
Right, for the kind of investigations we can do.
Right. So we would need to identify anything obvious, you know, without expending money first. And then, and there'll be some more work done in that area, I think.
Okay.
With respect to the Isabel School, the first thing we definitely need is opinion of town council on the legal status of the site. And that is in progress right now. And we should have that shortly. In any event, yeah.
I wanted to comment on that. I would like my fellow committee members from both boards to consider if it is, if it turns out to be true that we need to swap land out in order to use that, then I would like us to reexamine either Pine Manor, which might be a place where we could get the land as a place, as a site for the school, or the Old Baldwin School, which we would also need to swap land out with that one. But if we're swapping land anyway, I know that, I've heard from the school people that the redistricting doesn't work as well at that site. But I think that I like that end better because there is some access to public transportation there. And I think it's more accessible if you're, it's accessible to South Brookline people, but if you're sending people from North Brookline over that way, I find that to be more accessible than Lars Anderson. So I just, I just want to throw that out. If it turns out that that is the legal answer, I would like us to sort of broaden that conversation a little bit.
Yeah. I think our focus, and I've been working with Mr. Kleckner on this, is looking at other sites in South Brookline especially, that we could either identify for a swap or even another school site. It may turn out that land we identify would be better to do a school there rather than to swap it. That's something we're going to be working on. We don't have any answers right now. We're at the very beginning of looking in that direction. I think, I don't, identifying a site, this whole process hasn't been easy and I don't think identifying a site is going to be easy. So I don't want to get anybody's hopes up that a site is out there just waiting for us to grab it.
I wonder if anyone on the school committee wants to, I know I saw a couple of the emails today that were saying that the South Brookline answer should be more at Baker School. And I know, I think I've heard you, Susan, say that Baker School is already pretty large. What are your thoughts on that?
So there are a couple of different ways to think about Baker. I mean, first of all, it's very clear that there is need near and around the Baker School. And so putting things closer to density there and potential for development there makes a sense for a number of reasons. I think that the, some people are asking, well, could we expand Baker to a five-section school and have that solve the problem for South Brookline? And the answer is, it doesn't, because Baker's already over a four-section school. So it's not quite at four and a half sections yet, but it's.
Thirty-nine classrooms.
It's a thirty-nine classroom. So it's, you know, it is at four, so it's almost at four and a half sections. So adding essentially, you know, six classrooms there doesn't do any, I mean, doesn't make a dent in this. And so expanding Baker to five doesn't necessarily solve the problem for South Brookline. But I do think that there's, so one other idea that's been talked about for a number of years is the Baker parcel is decently sized and potentially putting another elementary school on the parcel, on the other side of the parcel, with its own principal, its own name, its own, you know, vice principals, own staff. So a separate elementary school, not a part of Baker or a lower-upper Baker situation, but its own elementary school, just on the same parcel. So that idea has been floated in the past and it's being floated again, I think, by some folks in the community as a potential idea. Because it solves the land piece of it, at any rate.
Yes.
I just want to go back to Lars Anderson for a minute. I think we have to be very careful when we talk about Lars Anderson as a potential site because it is walkable only by the children from Buttonwood Village. That means that people would have to drive their students to school, whether you're South Brookline or whether you're in the Heath, or in the Heath School area, wherever. It will become a school where children have to be driven. That means, number one, there are equity issues around that because you can't, you might, your family might have to go to work early in the morning, you have, you might not have the ability to drive your children to school for a whole variety of reasons. Now, we could bus, that's another possibility. But when you bus, that costs lots of money. But because of equity issues, I think if you use Lars Anderson, we would be put in the position of having to provide bus service because of, you know, the location of the school and the inability of some people to really get their children there. And I don't think we, I don't think any of us want to build a school that is not easily accessible to the children we are choosing to serve.
Yeah. Ms. Trowse.
I agree with you, but I think even going further, it's, you know, we will, if this school were to be built in South Brookline, whether Pine Manor, Lars Anderson, wherever, I think the issue with Lars Anderson for me is that parents won't be able to get there. There is no bus access. And so certain parents who don't have access to a car, and part of our school program is to engage families and have them be part of the school. And I think that would be a real problem. Pine Manor doesn't pose that as much because there is a bus that goes straight down Route Nine and there's the T also, all of within a block or two of the school.
Half mile or so.
No, 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 no. There's a bus that stops.
Yeah, the sixty bus stops right there, but the T is about a half mile away. Chesapeake Station. Ms. Heller.
Okay, doesn't seem it.
Well, I agree with the comments. On the other hand, I don't want to give up the opportunity of pressing the Commonwealth to, and the governor and the MBTA to increase the transportation to South Brookline. And, you know, we really ought to be doing it from a climate perspective anyway. And having a school there might mean that there would be even more reason to do it. So I, you know, I'm mixed about it because of that issue. And I do think that we should have more transportation options in South Brookline, more public transportation options. And, you know, it's a big piece to chew, but it is an issue, I think.
Okay, I'll move on. Yep. Sleckman-Green.
Can I go back to Cottage Farm? You know, there's been a lot of talk about all the bad things about Cottage Farm. If we choose not to put a school there, that doesn't make those issues go away because that land is still there, it's owned by BU. And it could be used for a number of things that would put not K eight children in Amory Park, but first through fourth-year college students in Amory Park. So it seems to me that, you know, someone should begin thinking about how either that land could be acquired or reach an agreement where some type of lien is put on the land to protect it from being used as a BU dorm or whatever. You know, there's certain restrictions on what BU can do, but, you know, we don't know, you know, what those, whether those restrictions are going to prevent a type of use of that property that could make all the concerns that people had about a school there kind of small in relation to, you know, what could happen. I don't have any, you know, ideas as to, you know, what that means. I think that if we don't use Cottage Farm as a school, people need to think of what do we do now regarding, with respect to that piece of land.
And it might be worth, just as we kind of go through the different sites, and maybe in our next conversation, one of the things we're going to want to do is prioritize what analyses we think are important enough to try to do. So it might be helpful to just have a long list, a running list as we go, which will be more than we would ever fund or do, but just to start to get those ideas out there that we can then winnow down and prioritize. So, I mean, the couple that I was hearing was, for Cottage Farm in particular, was one about the site planning question and just what are there other configurations of the site dealing, that would deal with preservation, deal with the concerns of property owners and whatnot. And I think the second was a set of things around environment and wetlands, both buildability but also impacts and frontal pools and sort of a bunch of, a bunch of things around that. There might be some other, some other questions. Certainly there were some more pragmatic questions, like what would it look like to share the site, sorry, share Amory Playground and how would you, how would that work? There were some questions about traffic, although there were also some preliminary traffic studies that could be informative at this sort of high level. So the two I had heard in terms of specific investments were site planning and environment. Not that we're going to do those, but just I'm trying to keep a running list of the kinds of things. Is there anything else that people thought was really important to understand about that site that we don't currently know now?
I think what Bernard said, BU is, is and has been, over time, heavily involved in places in the neighborhood. They buy things, they sell things, and the uses have been fairly benign thus far. But we don't know. They could build something on that site. They have a lot of land there. They own that whole Peter Fuller Building and it could be, they could develop heaven only knows what.
Got it. So let's go back to Lars then, because we almost finished that one. I mean, the ones I had for Lars were, although you actually didn't mention, so one of them was site, because the site is so constrained. And the reason it was drawn that way was because of the Article Six, the one Article Six in front of Town Meeting, which basically would have said that that was, it was a very small piece of it that could be built on. So it seems to me that the first question is a legal question.
And the Boston border.
And the Boston border, right? So the first question is just a legal question of what is, what are the conditions of the federal grant and what would be entailed in building there and could you swap or couldn't you? And all those different pieces of the legal restrictions and sort of under what, yes or no, and then if yes, sort of under what conditions? And then some of the questions about moving around in that space, not moving, I haven't heard anybody express interest in moving to the big part of the park, kind of the sledding hill and those pieces. But could you sort of adjust in that, in that space to be, to be more optimal? And then there were questions about traffic from our Boston abutters who had all sorts of thoughts about traffic in that area. So were there other analyses, again, on a long list, not a short list, that people were interested in hearing more about?
I want to take you back really quickly to your Cottage Farm list. Because one of the, you said that there have been some preliminary traffic studies done, but the combination of being told that the, that Amory is essentially, Amory Street is the only street that would be possible, given what preservation said, as access and egress. And that creates a very different set of traffic patterns for a school than if we had had, than what the study looked at originally. So I would want to go back to the impact of that on what we already know about the traffic.
And it seems to me that that would be one where we'd have to pay for some expertise.
Absolutely.
And that would be for the next phase, if we were to put this site in the next phase. In terms of the analysis that was done, there was a study done for a crosswalk in that vicinity. So we, I think, a year or two ago. So there's some traffic counts, but there hasn't been any analysis at this point of how the additional traffic of a school would affect that. So just want to make that clear. Ms. Stram?
So I know that we're generating a longer list, but I just want to put a stake in the ground in terms of what I think the short list is, because we don't have unlimited resources to do all of these studies. So in my opinion, I don't think it makes sense to do any further study on Cottage Farm or Lars. or Lars, other than the following two things. So one, on Cottage Farm, if, we need to understand if, given preservation restrictions, we can even build a three-section school, and if we can't even build that, then for me, I think that there's no point in moving on. And then for Lars, it's the, the legal opinion, or the, the, on the, the legal status of the site. And, and I think that in the short term, we should just focus on those two things, and, and not begin to dive down rabbit holes in terms of all the other issues that, that we're talking about here, so that staff can also begin to get a sense of what is the, should any of these other sites be on our list of things to consider?
Okay.
Right. So that's moving on to the next thing, what I, what I class, classified on this list as the urban sites. So, you know, I guess, you know, is there a sense, you know, I, I think there, there was a, I heard a lot of a, a community comment that we should be looking especially at the Stop and Shop site. So, you know, there are pros and cons to that site, it's a, it's a very complicated site, there's one, there's one configuration of that site in the report, you know, is, is that the right configuration? I don't know, you know, the, the, the configuration in the report affected four, four property owners, one of whom was a, is a, is a condo, would be taking their parking spaces. So if, if we were going to go in that direction, I would want to know, are there any alternate sites, any alter, alternate configurations that might be a, a, an easier eminent domain kind of situation? But e- but even before we get to that level, is, is, is that kind of urban school, is it, is it one that we want to start looking at? There, there was, I know there's been some resistance from some members of, of at least one of the boards.
Yeah. I'll speak, because I've been one of those resisting. I, I don't feel like, I, I know we've seen some examples in New York City and places of very urban schools, but I do not favor the rooftop playground models if we can avoid it, because I don't think that's in any way equivalent to all of our other schools. And certainly, you know, and my kids are long grown, so, you know, thankfully I don't have to worry about it, but I would not have wanted my kids to go to the grocery store school. And, you know, now if we could do that site and, and actually acquire the entire site and not have to share with that commercial use, I think there are other commer- other shared uses that, that would be more compatible with a school. I really worry about the amount of traffic coming in, it, I mean, that's true of TJ Maxx as well, the amount of traffic coming in and out of a site where you have very young children, and, you know, the, the, the possibilities of, issues with the rooftop playground situation. So, you know, if that site, if we could acquire the entire site and have a lot more flexibility, and have at least some of the place stuff be on the ground, I would be more favorable to it. But I, I, I do know that that then puts it in a different category financially than some of the others that we've looked at.
Ms. Jackson.
So I'm in favor, highly in favor, of urban sites for a host of reasons, including the idea that we are actually an urban suburban community, so I think it's a bad name to call these urban sites, I want to take that off the table, and suggest instead what we talk about are dual-use properties. The urban site does not have to have a rooftop playground, the urban site does not have to be just our site, the urban site can involve the entire community, and the urban site can actually expose our children to a variety of ways to have a high-quality education. So I would just encourage us to leave them on the table and to, we don't have any designs right now, all we have is like, here's a piece of land, you know, knock yourselves out. And I would love to knock ourselves out on the innovation, on the creativity, and on bringing Brookline forward in terms of what's possible for providing quality education. And I do think there's, you know, I appreciate the concern about a rooftop playground, but that's not the only option, and even if it were, I'm pretty sure New York's not spending time picking up kids off the ground from rooftop playgrounds. So, so I would just like to, I would hope we, as a town and as a set of boards, could be more open to a conversation about dual-use sites, as opposed to a conversation about urban sites.
I also, I, I agree with Dr. Jackson, so keep clapping, but, but I, I think that that, Dr. Jackson, that has been echoed in a lot of the community meetings that I've been at. I've been at, at least two to three evening meetings for the last two months, and overwhelmingly, what people said a year ago is this town would never go for a playground on the roof, this town would never do X, this town would never do Y, and that really is not what I've been hearing over the last couple of months, which is the first comment I made about, I think there is sort of an openness and a creativity that people, I've not seen before the last couple of months in this town. So I think that's exciting, and we should, we should think about it. I guess I, I just want to associate myself with a piece of your comment, which was about thinking more broadly about potentially not having the Stop and Shop on that site. Because I think that you're, you're, they're very, very different models, and certainly there is not only a financial impact in terms of purchasing that property, or taking that property, or whatnot, but there's also kind of the discounted cash flow of all of the tax, the taxes we're not getting from a commercial property, which has an, which has a different kind of tax impact on, on the rest of the town. And so I think what I would ask is that we ask, we do a little bit more due diligence on that, and maybe understand some of those financials, to even understand what we're talking about, because yes, it affects the finances, but like, this is all going to be expensive. So like, so it's expensive isn't a particularly compelling notion until we actually know how expensive it's going to be. And so anyway, I agree with you, and I think I would, what I'd like to see is more financial analysis of the purchase and acquisition, and, but also some of the, the tax impacts, and then thinking about what, what the neighborhood impact would be, and what the community impact.
I, I think we need to consider too, what the loss of supermarket would be to the community.
Well, that might be a community impact, sorry.
But I mean, I also think that that kind of school is going to be much more expensive to build, because I know when I was involved with the renovations at Ronkel, when you have very young children in a building, the building code requires a lot of, you know, abil- ability for you to be able to get them out of the building in an, in an emergency. So your, your amount of access you're going to have to have in terms of stairwells, elevators, et cetera, and, and that model is going to be-
You mean mixed use, you're not talking about if we had the whole site?
Right.
Mixed use.
Mixed use.
Okay, got it.
Would be, would be much higher, I think.
Good. Sure. I also want to just put in a bid for mixed-use sites, urban or not, having grown up in Manhattan and gone to two, no, three different schools that had rooftop playgrounds, and I'm still sitting here today. I, so I certainly have absolutely no objection to the idea that great schools can be built with rooftop play spaces. I don't think we should confuse rooftop play spaces, at least just from my N of One, with rooftop fields, and you, you cannot build a park on the roof of a school. You can build great play areas where kids can run around and play on equipment, and have the kind of physical exercise and experi- and outdoor experience that we would hope our kids would have during a school day. You can't build a park there. And so people who are concerned about inequities of what the kids in Brookline have may be making that distinction, and I think we should at least honor that, that it is different, it is a different outdoor experience than, than what you have with open fields next to a school. That said, I think great schools can be built where the only access to open space for that school immediately is on a roof, and there's certainly been huge advances made in that regard since I was in grade school. So, but as to the Stop and Shop site, for me, that's the personal site, because in fact, I shop there, that's my neighborhood, and, and so I, I would want to look very, very carefully at how we would find a space, because it's not just open land that we have to find swaps for, if we take land away from a commercial property, we have to find a space for them to have that commercial activity.
That matters.
We have to-
We have to pay for it.
I thought we had to find a space for them to go.
Sometimes people do-
Okay, well then I was misinformed about that.
But sometimes people do that to reduce the price.
It's part of the negotiation.
Right.
But in any event, so, so the price then of doing that is the important question, but the other important question for me is actually about the environment there for, for building. If we're talking about taking Stop and Shop's gas station as well, the schools have typically stayed away from gas station sites because of the underground tanks, because of the remediation involved. I know in Two Brookline Place, we went through that. So when we're talking about a school site, and we're talking about a site that's currently a gas station, I would like some, some significant due diligence done there about what it would take to turn that into a safe space for a school to be built. Including what, what it would take to create, because I think the, the other real problem with that site is that, right now, the way it's built, because it's up on that ledge, there is no access except on Harvard Street, which is one of, if not our busiest commuting street, certainly up there in the top two. And so if that's the only access egress, the pressure on that, so where would the other access egress actually be possible? Like the Lincoln School, are we talking about blasting through the ledge? What does that do? All of those things to, to create access from the back. So there, those are significant questions that I would not want to think about that site without having somebody look into those and get some answers for us.
Ms. Scott.
I just want to talk a little bit about this site and the losing the grocery store, the Stop and Shop. It seems to me that, and I have no objection to the mixed use, I would love to see a regular elementary school there without the Stop and Shop, but there are two elderly housing projects, not housing projects, but buildings nearby. One is the one right, almost directly across the street, on Harvard Street. The other one is down on Longwood Avenue. And while there are other stores like Trader Joe's in the neighborhood, that is not as comprehensive a supermarket as the Stop and Shop. And I think that the Stop and Shop really meets a need for those particular residents. I also would like to say that I think in many ways, that's a very good site in terms of our need. Now, it is a bit close to Pierce, but Pierce is quite overcrowded, so anybody who's living up in that direction, that would be a very good site to move some people out of Pierce. Devotion will be bigger, but as things go, you know, it's, we're building a school that will accommodate pretty much the students who are there now, and maybe a few more. So it could pull very easily from devotion, and also from Lawrence. And going up on this side of, on this side, on the Stop and Shop side of Beacon Street, not the Devotion School side, there are children there who go to Driscoll. So it's a site that could relieve overcrowding at a number of schools, and I think that that's an important consideration.
Ms. Glover.
On the, the dual-use sites, I would just add that I, that I have a bit of a concern about the complexity of the negotiating and, and dealing with a, a third party while we're trying to, to construct a school for ourselves. Our interests would not be aligned in those, those situations, and I'm concerned that the property owners have the benefit of not being pressed to do anything until we gave them a deal that was more favorable to them than we would otherwise like. So I think these sorts of negotiations are not easy, I've, I've done them in my past experience working for the state, and I've also done them in private practice as well. They take a long time, they're more complicated, and you don't always get where you should be, if, if the interests are not really aligned.
Or where you even need to be.
Right.
I heard, I saw, Mr. Chang.
So I want to kind of bring us back to the critical path in our decision-making process. I, I think we are all wanting for now more granular data on a bunch of critical path issues that we need to examine. One of the things I heard, I'm not quite sure how much resources has been set aside to do something like this.
That is an issue.
Right. And my opinion would be is that we may need to think to spend more money concerning how big this project is, and obviously the amount of public interest that we have. And not saying that we need to do exhaustive study for each one, but rather, I, I think, you know, to Ms. Ram's point, is that you could have a situation in Lars, Isabel School, where the legal status is basically, say, okay, no way, okay, now you hit a dead end, that one's off the table. Cottage Farm, engineering issues, you know, conservation issues, maybe that hits a dead end. So to me, I think we need to almost now run a number of parallel efforts to at least run them to a point where there is either a dead end, or there is sufficient information for us to say, okay, here's what we're dealing with, that's actually something that we could accomplish. So we need to, I, I think, think about enlarging that budget.
So we'll get there in a minute, I just want to make sure I got these, because I think we've, for a few of them, we're starting to get a long list, and people are expressing priorities, thank you, Ms. Ram, to get there, Mr. Chang, so that we actually know brigger than a breadbox, smaller than a house, like what, what are we talking about in terms of budget? So in terms of the Stop and Shop, what I heard was, number one, questioning the assumption of whether the supermarket stays, and some cost impacts of that. And then the second is a piece of community impact, the loss of the supermarket, there was loss of parking as well, so you have to note that one. And then it's the site planning questions of, you know, how might it work, and if there are, if the gas station's under consideration, there's environmental impact. Anyway, there's kind of a variety of different things after that. And I do think it's probably worth, for each of these, also highlighting the advantages, because if we're thinking of an advantage of adding green space to the town's roles, taking something that's a supermarket and turning it into a nice green space in front of a school, instead of a parking lot in front of a supermarket, I mean, that's an advantage that the town gets over and above a school. So anyway, so we're pulling that all out.
Ms. Trellebsen.
To add to the Stop and Shop site, the issue of traffic-
Mm-hmm.
...and the issue of the cost in lost revenues-
Yep.
-is a, a significant one, I would imagine.
Ms. Glover.
Sorry, could I just add one more thing on the Isabel site? To the extent we haven't already, we need to think about what we would need to do on the Boston side, in terms of what their land use regulations require for us to be able to do what we want to do. And it may be worth our while to have a conversation with someone from the, from the city if we haven't already. Yep.
Good.
Mr. Pollak, and then Ms. Slutman.
I don't, I don't think finding a site for a supermarket is in any way an easy task, but I would suggest it's probably a somewhat easier task than finding a site for a school. And I'd just be really- I, I'd just be really interested to know if there's been any, any thinking about it on the part of EDAB, or that, our, our town planners, or i- if, if we could, you know, sort of have any kind of a high-level exploration of, of if there are options for, you know, in, in, in the sense of community uses, having our cake and eating it too, and being able to think about keeping a supermarket in the village, while also potentially being able to, to, to take a, a site that would be big enough to solve o- open space school parking problems altogether.
A tall order. And the last one, yeah, I'm sorry, Slutman, Green.
Yeah, I'd like to, at this point, throw out my crazy idea. Since all school, all school sites are going to have problems, I mean, we're, we're going to get people talking about losing trees, you know, rooftop playgrounds, I mean, everyone has an objection to practically every site. So I'd like to sort of throw out on the table, Webster Street, not as a ninth school, but it's something that maybe the school committee can think of as providing space for, I don't know, off the top of my head, a, a STEM-type program, where maybe, you know, some of the issues about play areas will be- Where maybe, you know, some of the issues about play areas will be different. I mean, they won't go away, but they'll be different than for a full-fledged school. I just throw that out because, you know, we're putting ideas on the table and we, we need to really think far ahead and in a much more expansive way than I think maybe we have been doing.
Moving on to the last site, because we need to wrap this up. The Walnut School. To me, the big piece is, you know, we're, we're using the building. We will be using the building at least for the next, like, ten years. So we, we, we need to understand exactly, you know, how we're using it and the financial impact and operational impact if, if that wasn't available. Because, you know, right, right now, you know, it's, it's an important town asset that we, we would be losing. Now, I, I, I don't know if I've seen, you know, a documented analysis of that, but I, I, I think it's important that, that we have that if, if we're going to pass over that building because, you know, it's, it's being used as swing space. So I think we need to understand what are the, what are the opportunity costs that we would be giving up or, yeah.
Well, I, as you know, I favored the old Lincoln School site. It, it's, you know, been a school for many years. I mean, it would be completely renovated and expanded, but I think it's a good site. It's, there's a lot of access because it's right on Route Nine for people from different parts of town to get there. I'm going to just suggest, I was listening to everyone's comments on the mixed use. Maybe that mixed use site would be more appropriate to build as our swing space and use the old Lincoln School as a school site.
Okay, we'll think about that.
Ms. Scott.
I think that this brings us back to the idea of having to look at the whole pot of things that we're doing. Because when you talk about using the Lincoln School as the ninth school, what you have effectively done is take that off of the table as a possibility for some sort of high school expansion. And I'm not saying that we might not decide to do that, but I don't think, I think that, as I think Ms. Ditko said early on, you've got to look at the whole series of things that we have to do. And you can't make one decision without thinking about how it affects another decision. Certainly, there's the, the swing space problem, there's also the high school problem. And I, for one, would be loathe to moving that back into the, well, this might be a ninth school, unless it were discussed in context of all of these issues.
And just, you know, by way of comparison, when we're talking about what is the financial impact or the financial value of the swing space, we're actually fortunate to have a decent comparable in the Webster Street building, which is not exactly the same size. But it's in the, it's, we can look at the cost of that on an annual basis and project that out ten years. You can inflate it, you can discount it back. You can, I mean, there, there's actual financial analysis you can do to figure out what is the value of having to rent an equivalent amount of swing space, which doesn't get to some of the other things. But anyway, I think this is notable.
And when you're doing that, you can't just think about being able to rent. You have to find a place.
Right.
Because that's been one of the biggest problems that we've had all along, that there aren't empty schools around. May change, you know, often they're talking about it, but you know.
Sluckman, hello.
Another consideration in terms of Lincoln School. There was a reason that we did not use that building for the Lincoln School. We moved it to it, the, the site on Canard Road, the site of the lower part of the Lincoln School. First of all, it wasn't big enough. Second of all, it's very, very difficult to access because it's right on Route Nine. There's a ledge there, you can't even, it's really hard, as we discovered, to do construction on it because you can't get the trucks onto the site itself. They have to have big cranes and et cetera. The, it was never going to be equal to any of our other ninth, any of our other elementary schools because the playground is across a hugely busy street, not even comparable to Pierce, where the kids go over a bridge and go to Pierce Park. Cypress Street is, or School Street, as it called at that point, is nothing compared to Route Nine and the traffic you face. The area around the school is very, very, very small for, for the playground, for the, for the younger grades. So to me, it's, it, it, and it, and it's worked out very, very well as a swing space because nobody, people are going to swing into it for a couple of years and it's not going to be a home for anyone with, with all of its disadvantages for very long. It's better than modulars in some instances. It's better than, you know, being bused to other rental places. It saved the town a huge amount of money. And just because we've renovated most of our schools now doesn't mean we're going to have to stop. At some point, we're going to have to start another cycle of re-renovation. At some point, the Lincoln, the Lincoln School is going to need to be renovated. And the Lawrence School is going to be, need, need to be renovated. And I'm talking years and years down the line. We probably should be renovating things every twenty-five years. Our history's been more like every forty years. But still, if you're going to renovate a school every, in, all of our schools, and we have nine of them, if you're going to renovate those in forty years, you're renovating, you're basically renovating a school every four years. And so you really do need swing space. So that's my thoughts about Lincoln. Reasons I put it on the very, very back burner in terms of a ninth elementary school.
Ms. Stone.
I associate myself with everybody who suggested that the old Lincoln site is not a great site for a ninth school at this point in time. But I wanted to just say that there were a couple of things that came out of the conversation, especially around the needs for another ninth school, a second ninth school in, in South Brookline. One of the issues that has been raised with the Baldwin site, with the, and the other, and Pine Manor, but also actually with the, with the Isabel School site that we've been looking at is that all of them are a little bit too far north to be really, really useful for the, for the population problem in South Brookline. But, and the area that's not too far north is around Putterham. And so because we have been talking about collaborating across the town, looking at the town as a whole, as a whole. And just coming back to the conversation, the, the idea from the Conservation Commission that we be looking as a town at adding capacity for everything that we have, that we are currently pressing on for parks as well as, as well as schools, as well as other facilities, that, that there be some consideration of the conversation we're having around our libraries, around, we're talking about mixed use with commercial. We're not talking about mixed use with our libraries. I ask why. So maybe as we're looking at the South Brookline issue, at the issues of redistricting and the, the pressure north and the pressure south, that we ought to be looking at those sites that create potential for addressing other town issues at the same time. And so I just wanted to put that on the table as we're looking for, as I think Ben's comments were, were very good in terms of saying, you know, there, there are several sites here that could be off the table very, very soon. And so as we're thinking, well, what do we do then? I think that other idea of looking at multi-use sites that are not just with commercial ought to be on the table for us.
Let's finish out this list, because I think we're, are we, are we done?
Yeah.
I mean, the only thing I would say is just on the South Brookline thing, there have been a number of pieces of the South Brookline, of available land in South Brookline that people would like to see if, if it's available, sorry, land in South Brookline people would like to see. One piece is the Pine Manor conversation, that people wanted more information about that. I mean, another was Bourne Wood, where there's a residential facility right now. I, I'm not sure, I heard support for a school on the Bourne Wood site with a residential facility that was still in operation, given some of the, the history with that facility. But I do think that there were other potential questions about the Bourne Wood site that, that I heard. And then, anyway, there were a variety of other South Brookline sites. But people said, well, Lars is so complicated and it's true that things came off the table because Lars was available, do those things come back on the table? So I think there's just a, a couple of those.
Dr. Jackson.
While we talked about mixed use and Stop and Shop, no one's asked or said anything about the TJ Maxx and Center Street? Are they still on the table or should we take them off?
We haven't voted to take anything off.
No, I understand, but it also got ignored, so I'm just wondering.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I think we, we, we kind of have to prioritize them. Does anyone have a thought that we should prioritize TJ Maxx above Stop and Shop? And then, you know, Center Street is a whole different analysis.
I guess I would argue that if we're going to look at dual use, we should look at places where you can do dual use and we can do dual use there. So either we look at that or we don't look at that. I wouldn't look at it only at Stop and Shop. I think Ms. Stone's notion of dual use with the library in a school is also creative. And so I just, if, either we are or we aren't. And if we are, then I think we should look at multiple.
I don't think we, I don't think we have the resources to, you know, we, we have limited resources.
Well, then let's take them off the list and stop acting like they're on the list. I'm, what I'm trying to understand is whether they're real. Because if they are real, we should talk about them. If they're not real, and it's not about prioritization, it's whether we're looking at dual use and site within that or whether we're saying, you know, they're off the list and the dual-use site we're looking at is this. So I'm just trying to push on whether that's.
Or there are other reasons that take them off the table.
Which is fine, but I would just.
I have heard repeatedly, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the, the, the districting for that location would be particularly difficult.
Which one?
For, for the TJ Maxx site. But, you know, but based on its location. And that, I think that's why people are not pursuing it as avidly. Am I right on that or?
I, I wouldn't take TJ Maxx off the table only for redistricting. I think these redistricting things were broad brushstrokes and they were a terrific kind of first pass. I'm not sure I would take anything off of redistricting alone at this point. I think there are a lot of other pieces to the TJ Maxx site that it was, as presented, that are, aren't attractive to me, but if there, if it's attractive to other people. There's, if, I guess the question is, if people feel like there's more analysis to be done on that site because it's potentially a top-tier site, let's talk about that.
But, yeah, and that's my only question. I don't have a strong.
Yeah, yeah, no, perfect, no, it's great.
Ms. Heller and then Ms. Ram.
Well, it has some attractions in that it's, it is a department store. It's less busy. I can assure you, I go there. And the parking lot is less busy than the Stop and Shop one. It's, there are far fewer people going into the store on a regular, I mean, you know, it's steady. But so in, in that way, in terms of mixed use, it's, 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 I think, attractive. No gas station and, and we don't obviously know whether there are environmental issues, but, you know, right out of the gate, there aren't any. I don't think it's as complicated as Stop and Shop. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily say it's, it's better than Stop and Shop, but it's not. I don't think it's worse. I mean, it has, think it has some things which, which, you know, which make it as attractive as the Stop and Shop site. And, you know, we just might have to pick, but I wouldn't necessarily knock it off for that reason.
Ms. Ram, and then I, I, I want to bring this to a close.
I think that to the extent that there are analyses that are, that are conceptual to a mixed-use site, we can keep that broad. But if, if we're going down the path that Mr. Chang talked about, which is one where we're trying to understand whether or not certain sites need to stay on or stay off the list, I would, my personal opinion is that I would put Stop and Shop ahead of the others because it is in a more favorable location. And also, and in my view, one of the reasons why it's a more favorable location is, again, from a long-term scenario planning standpoint, I think having something that is centrally located gives you a better ability to, for example, bring beeps back or if, you know, you wanted to use that as, as also office space for central administration or for the town, there's just so many more things that you could do with a site that's, that's centrally located. So I would, I would prioritize that. But again, in, in the, in the spirit of trying to identify which sites should stay in or out, not necessarily to discount that, you know, if other sites get taken off the list, that we won't look at TJ Maxx or others down the line.
Right, yeah, I would agree with that.
I just have a question. I, I have not been considering TJ Maxx as a mixed-use site. The TJ Maxx store is not part of the site. The parking lot is the site. So we would not be building above the store. Of course, we could make it a mixed-use site if we chose to build the first level as stores. But I, it, to me, if you're talking about Stop and Shop, you are talking about Stop and Shop being at the first level. But the TJ Maxx is not included in, was not included in the civic moxie study, only the parking lot.
Right, that, that's true. I think we, we need to bring this to a close. I, I think, you know, it was good to kind of check in, take the temperature of the board, have a public discussion of the process thus far. You know, the, the discussion was perhaps a little rambling, a little more rambling than we'd like and under normal circumstances. But this is an important project for us in the town. It's a, it really is a hundred-year decision and it's important that we be transparent in our thinking and have our, have discussions.
Right, well, so I would just say, make one point about the rambling, which is this, this, you know, in one sense, it like drives me nuts to have like a rambling discussion. But at the same time, this is the open meeting law and so we can't deliberate. I was, last week, I was saying, I was being asked, so what are you guys going to decide on Tuesday? I'm like, you know what, I have no idea because we're not allowed to deliberate. So I'm not going to apologize for it being rambling because this is a democracy and this is the law and this is our values and you all don't have to be here if you don't want to. But we do. And we hope, we hope you do keep coming back. The, the only last thing I want to say is a tremendous thank you to our staff. Kara Bruton has sort of put this project in her backpack and then from time to time, board members and staff members and like marched this up the mountain. And so thank you, Kara, thank you, thank you, thank you. She's worked with an amazing team of people who've put together, I mean, the school staff who put together these numbers, you know, Joe, Mary Ellen, others. She's worked with Ben Lemus very closely, who's brand new and jumped in the deep end and, on the school side and has been incredibly helpful in structuring this, so, and many, many others. Joe and Mel, both of your leadership. So thank you, this is a, a huge lift.
Okay, I'm going, yeah.
Before we close, can you just say, and the next step is?
Oh, sorry, we said it already, but we'll say it again, which is we're going to reconvene the two boards together in a rambling and fabulous discussion in January, where we're going to, hopefully, what I, in, in the meantime, we will have some discussion with staff to help us prioritize within here. But where we will prioritize and figure out, to Mr. Chang's question, some options or ideas on timing, on money allocation that would be required to this, on staffing allocation that would be required to kind of get us through to the, to the next phase of this, which is identify the analyses, have them commissioned, do the staff work that doesn't require money, and then get us to a decision along the, the one-page timeline. I don't know if it's here, thank you, Ms. Ram is holding it up. It's the one, it's the very, very tiny print one-pager that we distributed at the public hearing. So we're kind of still on that.
Okay, so the next time we'll meet as a joint board is sometime in January, mid-January. We'll, we'll set the date in the coming weeks and.
And we're, and there are many meetings in between, just so people know, with the advisory committee, with, with others in between these times, so stay tuned. Can I just make one plug as it pertains to next steps? I, I do think that this, this timeline that I just held up is very helpful in terms of giving people a sense of where we're going. What would also be helpful to make it, you know, perhaps make these conversations a little less rambling is if we could get a set, a more specific sense at each point. What are the decisions that we're expecting to make? Who has input into those decisions? Who's responsible for making a recommendation? And then who actually makes the decision? And I think that, that that would help both us as a board and the community be much more clear in terms of how. And I think that, that that would help both us as a board and the community be much more clear in terms of how this is happening.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest, uh, the Board of Selectmen still has a full agenda. So I'm going to suggest we take a five-minute recess and then we'll reconvene. Right, yeah. And I, uh, we did actually, um. Um, it's not closed, you know, it's, it's. Yeah, you would ask to, to, to be, I'd, I'd be happy to, um, um, and it's just, it, it, it'd blur things, um, so. Shoot next week or? You know, that might be better. I'm around that way. Either Monday morning, twenty-eighth, or Thursday morning. As early as possible. I'm up at, uh, five-thirty. I will be more than happy to have a frank discussion, all the pros and cons. It's so complicated. This is, I've been at this for three years, I'm in the B-space. I have scars. I don't know. I don't know. So email me, uh, email me a place, yeah. Okay, I'm gonna ask folks to clear the room if, uh, you're not interested in the Selectmen's discussion. Where's my calendar? Okay. Um, any announcements from, uh, Selectmen?
I have two announcements. Uh, one, uh, continuing with the theme of the interest of this board in leaf blowers. Uh, I wanted to highlight the fact that today is the last day that leaf blowers may be used until March fifteenth of two thousand sixteen. So, uh, I hope that everybody's cleaned up their leaves, uh, and, uh, and we expect, uh, that leaf blowers will not be used, uh, until March. So, just a public service announcement. Uh, and the second, um, announcement I was gonna make, uh, has to do with, uh, the Twenty-First Annual Town Hall Toy Drive. Uh, this is a, a long tradition in town, sponsored by, uh, I believe, uh, Town Council's office and the mailroom and, and print shop. Um, and it is going on up until, I believe, Thursday afternoon. Uh, there's information on the town website, um, but quickly, um, uh, toys may be dropped off from the basement of Town Hall, the police department, the first floor, the health department at the veterans' office, or the council on aging. Um, and for additional information, feel free to call, um, Town Council's office, uh, or, um, Tim Sullivan in, in the mail and print shop.
Yeah, Mr. Kleckner and I were both at the flag raising for a deceased veteran, Connie Schultz. Uh, last, when was it? Was it only yesterday? I had a long wait. Anyway, uh, it, it, it was very nice and, um, I wanna say that Connie was, was, was a real, um, feisty lady and I'm gonna miss her. She was a, a World War II Army nurse.
Selectman Green.
Yes, uh, I'd like to report on a committee that I chair, the, uh, Martin Luther King Junior Celebration Committee, to sort of let you know what we have in store for you in January. Um, we're gonna have a sort of special, uh, program this year. We're gonna have a service, uh, uh, project, two service projects, that, uh, the committee is working with a number of, uh, uh, individuals and packs, uh, to put together, um, to sort of represent the sort of service aspect of, uh, King's, um, you know, vision of how, uh, people should, uh, treat each other and function in the world. Uh, and then the program at the Coolidge Corner Theater, Coolidge Theater, uh, is gonna be a little different also. We're gonna have the, uh, usual, uh, high school singing team, uh, groups, which will, which is always, uh, very exciting and, and, and very enjoyable. We're also gonna have a focus on poetry with, uh, a high school poetry slam group, um, performing, as well as our poet laureate, uh, Jan Schneider, who will participate in the program, um, in, in, uh, a number of ways. So, um, and, and our speaker this year is, uh, professor at Northeastern University, Susan Mays-Rostine, who is, uh, very, uh, an expert and, and very well regarded in the area of restorative justice, uh, involving both victims as well as offenders in a communication after, um, uh, offenses occurred to try to mend the two, uh, sides as opposed to, you know, having them go their separate ways, one to jail and one to, you know, um, um, you know, to their corner, uh, and, and never get, uh, resolution. So, so I think it's gonna be an interesting program and, uh, um, I look forward to, uh, to, uh, to it and, um, I hope, I hope everyone enjoys it.
Okay.
It's, uh, January eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Is that right?
Yeah. Okay, um, we have public comment tonight, so, uh, Ms. Snow? The podium is yours, you got three minutes.
And I'll be brief. Uh, I'm Cynthia Snow, Chair of the Brookline Bicycle Advisory Committee. And we wanted to let you know that the committee has, is preparing an application to the League of American Bicyclists for recognition of Brookline as a bicycle-friendly community. Uh, the League of American Bicyclists is the leading national bicycle advocacy organization and their programs for recognizing bicycle-friendly communities, universities, and businesses has been in operation for a number of years. If you enter some of our neighboring communities, Boston, Newton, Cambridge, Somerville, Arlington, they're all, you'll, you may see a little sign at some of the entry points that say that they're bicycle-friendly communities. Uh, we feel that Brookline is making steady progress in developing bicycle infra, infrastructure and so we want to be recognized as well. And we appreciate the support that we have received from the Selectmen via the budget process and supportive recommendations coming forward from the Trans, Transportation Board to which we report. We have also received notable support for improving bicycling in Brookline and in preparing this application from the Transportation Board, Transportation Department staff, Police Department, and others. We wanted to alert you that this effort is underway because we will be coming to you formally in the next couple of months, um, for your support of our application. And I'd be happy to answer any questions and I've left a little card by your place that has our website on it. We can be reached at any time through our website. Thank you.
Thank you, that's, uh, very exciting. And, uh, I know we've made, uh, a lot of progress with bike lanes and sharrows, um, uh, and, and we, uh, I guess our first protected bike, uh, lane will be going in with the Gateway East Project, um, over Route Nine and Washington Street. Hopefully that'll be a demonstration that it's feasible and, uh, develop support, uh, from the town and the community for others in that direction. Thank you. Okay, moving along to our miscellaneous calendar. So the, uh, first item is, uh, the question of accepting two grants totaling nineteen thousand five hundred dollars from the Massachusetts Departmental, Department of Environmental Protection under the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program for Solid Waste and Recycling Expenditures. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Kevin Johnson, Highway and Sanitation Director. Yeah, we're here tonight to, uh, have you vote to, uh, accept this grant from the Mass D-E-P. Um, it's a grant that is given to municipalities that show, um, different categories that we do throughout the town that, uh, gives us the, the okay to, uh, go for these grants such as, um, I don't know if you put it in here, but, no, we have a mandatory recycling program. We have a household hazardous waste program, you know, so each, each program you do, you get points. So many points and so many points get, adds up to the total, so. So we're here to, um, ask for the approval for this grant.
Any questions, comments?
No, it looks good.
Okay, I'll move that we accept the two grants totaling nineteen thousand five hundred dollars from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection under the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program for Solid Waste and Recycling Expenditures. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, next item is the question of awarding and executing a contract repairing concrete stairs at Winthrop Path in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars to Park Landscape of Roselandale. Mr. Ditto.
Good evening. Uh, for your information, Winthrop Path, Path runs from Washington Street to Winthrop Street. Um, we had been receiving many calls, uh, about the condition of the path and we went up and looked at it. It was in bad enough condition that we had to barricade it off and close it. Uh, hence we went out for quotes to do some remedial measures, which involved repairing approximately thirty to thirty-two steps. In addition, there was some drainage work, uh, done to alleviate any water running down the stairs and freezing. We solicited three proposals, uh, from local vendors and Park Landscape was the low bidder. Park Landscape most recently did Lawson Path for us. We can rehabilitated Lawson Path. And they also did the stairs down on Station Street that lead from the Ken Street parking lot down to Station Street. We're, uh, very satisfied with their work. Uh, this work has actually been completed and the path is now open.
Okay, so we might as well pay for it. Um, any questions?
You're getting ahead of us, Mr. Ditto.
I am.
So they did this at risk.
I, I just, I do have one quick question. Uh, in the, the cover note and then on the, the contract, uh, coding approval form, uh, there's mention made of, uh, installation of Sitka two-eleven S C C. I'm just wondering what, what that is. Is it the sort of rubber coating on the stairs to prevent slips or?
It's a two-part epoxy that, uh, puts a co, a covert waterproof covering over the stairs. And then you sprinkle sand on it to give it a little abrasive.
Some texture, okay.
Okay, so I'll move that we award the con, and execute the contract, uh, repairing concrete stairs at Winthrop Path in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars to Park Landscape of Roselandale. All those in favor, please say ayes. Selectman Daly.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item is the question of approving and executing a lease agreement for twenty-eight, uh, twenty-seven Acres Avenue in the amount of eighteen hundred fifty dollars a month with Sylvie Manning. Mr. Simmons.
Good evening. Charlie Simmons, Director of Buildings. I'm requesting the board approve a lease for Twenty-Something Acres Ave. It's been vacant since March and we went up to bid three times and we have, um, a very nice person that bid on it. And she bid the minimum amount, which is eighteen hundred and fifty dollars a month. And the lease would be for three years.
I have two questions. Um, and, uh, it gets into a little bit of the nitty-gritty of the contract, but I'm hoping Mr. Simmons, uh, can, um, give me an answer and. but I'm hoping Mr. Simmons can give me an answer and give me an explanation as to what's going on. I'm sure there, there is an explanation. In, I think it's clause fifteen of the contract, it's page D six in our packets, there's mention of a mechanic's lien. And I'm wondering why we're allowing the occupant to do work and they would ever have to get a mechanic's lien in order to do that work.
This is a generic spec and it applies to all the properties. And some of the properties, over the years, have had a situation where the tenant did substantial amounts of work in lieu of not paying rent. This particular house has done a lot of work on it already. It's in actually pretty good condition. There might be a situation sometime in the future where the tenant might want to paint. They might want to hire their own painter. If I agree to it, then that potentially could be a lien problem. I haven't had this situation in a while. Twenty-nine Avon Street was the last property that we did a substantial amount of work where the tenant did all the work.
Okay. And then my second question, this is on page D eleven of our packets. It's in the, I think what's called the further, not conditions, but, pardon me, I'm getting my pages stuck. It's under number twenty-five, Other Provisions, Number Seven. There's mention of the occupant being responsible for maintenance of the heating equipment. That seems like something that the town maybe should be doing. I'm wondering why it's in the, why it's in the contract.
Good. That's under the section called Services. And it went back to a time where the tenant would sign an oil contract to deliver oil for heat. And typically, those contracts also included service as far as preventative maintenance on the boiler. The house right now burns gas, so it's a moot point anyway. But I would like her to do some minor maintenance, like changing the batteries and the thermostat. I don't expect any problems with the boiler.
So, the major work, replacement of a boiler, major service would be done by the town?
Exactly, by the town.
I'm satisfied.
Okay. Selectmen Green?
And that is, this is a residential piece of property. Do we own a lot of residential properties? And I guess, why do we own residential properties that we're leasing out?
We own about, let's see, about seven properties throughout town. We've always owned them since I, before I've come.
Sometimes people, like, would deed them to the town, you know, in their will or something like that. Some of them are historic, like the one at Lars Anderson and the Devotion House. And some of, this one is a little tiny house, but it is right on the edge of the Elliott Playground, the Elliott, what's the name of that park? Has another name, but.
Elliott, Elliott.
Elliott, okay. So, I mean, we have had discussions about, you know, maybe at some point we might want to use that space for something else.
Is it big enough for a new school?
Well, this is, I think I, it was seven hundred square feet or something. The house is tiny, tiny, yeah.
Not even big enough for a one-room schoolhouse. Okay, are we ready for a vote? So, therefore, I'll move that we approve and execute the lease agreement for Twenty-seven Acres Avenue in the amount of eighteen hundred fifty dollars a month with Sylvie Manning. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Now, we have the question of approving the request of Lemieux Inc. doing business as Lemieux Tea Householder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license as a common vitruler at ten thirty-two Commonwealth Avenue for extension of hours on New Year's Eve until two a.m. And the Police Department approved this. They currently have a one a.m. license. They want to bring the New Year's in bright one evening.
Bright and early.
Bright. I don't stay up that late on New Year's Eve, but other people do. Any questions, comments?
I have one question. Is, they're talking about having a DJ and is that something that they're gonna do inside only? Yes? Okay.
Okay, therefore, I'll move that we approve, where'd it go? The request of Lemieux Inc. doing business as Lemieux Tea Householder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license as a common vitruler at ten thirty-two Commonwealth Avenue for an extension of hours on New Year's Eve until two a.m. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we have two temporary licenses. I'll, I'll do them in omnibus fashion. First one is the question of granting a temporary wine and malt beverage license to Lars Anderson Auto Museum in connection with a Dancing With The Cars, ha-ha, series, to be held on January eighth from six to eleven at fifteen Newton Street. And the other one is a question of granting a temporary Walt, Walt, I keep doing that, wine and malt beverage license Pine Manor College in connection with a banquet to be held on January thirteenth from five thirty to nine thirty at four hundred Heath Street. Any questions, comments? I'll note the applications appear to be complete and the Police Department sees no reason to deny the license. Therefore, I'll, I'll move the granting of both those temporary licenses that I read. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, moving on to our main calendar. The Long Range Financial Forecast, Ms. Goff?
Good evening.
And Mr. Cirillo is gonna help.
Yeah, so while this is my first Long Range Financial Plan presentation, this is actually Steve's last. So, I wanted to just take this opportunity to thank Steve for his help as I've been going through this and the C I P. It's been really great to have him as a guide when I have questions and things like that. So, I'm just gonna get started.
I'm still in denial on that. I told Steve I don't think we should, we'll allow him to retire.
I don't think that's an option.
So, that's kind of the highlights for this forecast for fiscal seventeen through twenty-two. I think that everyone that just heard the night school discussion understands the enrollment pressures that the schools are continuing to face. Employee benefits and collective bargaining continue to put pressure on both town and school budgets. Looking at the fiscal seventeen projection, the town budget, we're gonna have approximately a four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar problem to deal with on the school side. Their, their problem is somewhere in the range of three hundred and fourteen, at least right now. Some of the school cost pressures include sped, steps, collective bargaining, transportation costs. On the town side, we're also dealing with collective bargaining, solid waste and recycling contracts, pension and OPEB, other post-employment benefit funding. This is also year two of the three-year funding plan for the schools. Your first year was the six-point-two million dollar piece of the override funds. And I have another slide that shows the year-two funding, the mix of override and non-override funding. So, some of the assumptions that we're making in the forecast for revenue, that we will be raising to the full levy capacity. You'll remember from setting the tax rate that we didn't do that this year, that we left one-point-four-six-five million that we wanted to allocate in fiscal seventeen. So, we're raising to the full capacity in seventeen. Within property tax, we have new growth in fiscal seventeen. Five hundred thousand dollars is coming from the Red Cab site. We also have Red Cab money coming in in fiscal eighteen of a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Another, another piece of new growth that you'll see is the conversion of the Village of Brookline from a one-twenty-one A to property tax. So, you'll see in a future slide where one-twenty-one As are categorized under pilots. So, you'll see a decline in that line item, but you're, it's actually just moving it from that source to the property tax. I'm also projecting an additional eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars from an increase in the meter rate. This is something that we've talked about a couple, for a couple of years now. We were able to hold off in fifteen from doing that because we had favorable group health numbers. So, in seventeen, this is a piece of some of the funding that we would be allocating to the schools. In addition, I'm anticipating a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in lodging taxes from the Red Cab site. And I'm also anticipating four hundred thousand dollars for Chapter Seventy aid and an increase in the unrestricted general government aid of approximately two and a half percent. For, for Chapter Seventy, you know, we've seen some big increases in the past, but I think that we are very close to the seventeen and a half percent state commitment. And we're also not seeing inflation being applied to the foundation budget because it's pretty flat this year. So, that's why we're not seeing as large of an increase as we've experienced in the past.
And of course, they're, they're considering changing the whole formula, are they?
Right. There are recommendations from a legislative commission that when I talked to someone at the Department of Education, it wasn't, he basically wasn't sure whether or not the Baker Administration would follow any of the guidelines that they've been given. But obviously, there's still many iterations of the budget that we could see some changes in these numbers, so.
Are those guidelines better or worse for us?
I think that the schools will probably say that they're, they're more reflective of some of their, some of their costs in terms of special education and health, health insurance costs that are part of the formula for how foundation aid is determined. In terms of the expenditure side, for group health, I'm currently assuming a five percent rate increase in fiscal seventeen. Obviously, Mel being on the G I C will be helpful as we move forward in the budget process as to whether or not that five percent is still a good assumption. But given this past year's experience, it may not be. Also, assuming a two percent collective bargaining for both town and.
I'm sorry, could I ask a question about that?
Sure, sure.
I've been hearing on the radio and reading that the Obamacare, you know, the Affordable Care Act, they're expecting increases more than five percent in health insurance for the people who are in those plans.
That's the individual market.
Yeah. But I'm wondering whether you think that's gonna drive the G I P up as well? I mean, the G I C.
Well, I think that, you know, Mel's talked to some of his counterparts and I think that five percent is, is in the range of what other communities are also anticipating, but I don't know if you have any more.
Well, in, in specific relation to the Affordable Care Act, I, I don't think that fiscal seventeen, our fiscal seventeen will be impacted by that yet, but it will in the future. There's the Cadillac tax and other components that we're very concerned about.
Are, are our plans such that they would be subject to the Cadillac tax?
Probably.
Wow.
I, I would call it more of the Chevy tax because, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't appear, you know, our, our plans, you know, aren't really that rich. You know, they are comprehensive plans, but I think unfortunately, there is no geographic sort of equalizer. So, we're, we're living in the country's most expensive healthcare market.
Right.
And that has an influence on that.
So, we are continuing the OPEB funding plan and we're also continuing the fiscal policies with regard to reserves and free cash in the C I P.
Where are we in an actuarial, actuarial assessment for the, the sort of OPEB gap?
Further in the presentation, I've got slides to talk about the timing and where we are and all of that.
I'll hold my fire then.
Okay. Can I, or maybe you're gonna get to this later too, but I wanted to ask about the anticipated increase in the meter rates going to the schools? I mean, since they, we just passed an override, which went entirely to their side of the budget. I'm wondering, okay.
So, we can, we'll get there very, very shortly, in two slides. So, this, this slide here basically is just a history of some of the budget gaps that we faced and the measures that we've taken to close the gap. Most recently, in fiscal fifteen was, was the bridge year prior to the override, where we had some G I C rate savings that allowed us to avoid raising the meter rates at that time. Fiscal sixteen obviously was the first year of the override. So, this is the three-year plan that was presented in the financial plan last year. So, year one was six-point-two million from tax funding. Year two is the remaining levy capacity that would need to be raised. In addition, a million dollars in non-override funds that we had talked about during the whole process last year. So, of that million dollars, approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand is from new revenue from the parking meter rate increase. I don't know if you have any additional questions on that right now.
Keep going.
Okay. So, this is the annual blizzard of numbers that no one can read. But basically, the bottom line, and when it gets posted online, you'll be able to see it a little bit clearer, is that we have an overall deficit of about eight hundred thousand dollars, of which on the town side is four hundred and eighty-two thousand and on the school side is three hundred and eighteen thousand. And I have another slide that breaks it down, just breaks down the overall deficit so that you can see how the revenue expenditures kind of play into each other. But this is just kind of an overall picture of the financial forecast. So, now I'm gonna turn it over to Steve so he can talk about revenue.
Good evening. Revenue and expenditure forecasting has been used by Massachusetts cities and towns since approximately nineteen eighty-five. It's a tool that allows cities and towns to look out over the horizon for a length of time from anywhere from eighteen months to five and a half years. So, in, in the case of this forecast here, we would be looking out to the end of fiscal year seventeen to the end of fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Now, because of the length of time of the forecast, cities and towns have to be slightly conservative in their estimates that they include in these forecasts. But the forecast is essentially the first step in setting the parameters of the discussion that will ultimately lead to a balanced budget for the town of Brookline by February fifteenth of two thousand sixteen. Now, at this point in time, we don't know all of the information, but we do know a great deal of information. And in the next few slides, as I describe revenue to you, I'm gonna try to point out some of the key information that we've included in this forecast. The first slide that I'd like to show you is just our basic starting point. This is, this is the current year fiscal sixteen revenue composite and it, no one's surprise, primary, most of our revenue comes from property tax and roughly ninety-two and a half percent of our revenue comes from the town of Brookline. Only a, a small seven-point-five percent comes from external sources. Oh, I pressed the wrong direction. This is fiscal year seventeen's revenue summary and this, it looks skewed. We have approximately, we're estimating a growth in revenue of approximately nine-point-five million dollars in the general fund portion of the financial plan. That's a three-point-eight percent increase. But as you could see, most of this funding, approximately eight-point-nine-plus million dollars is from property tax. The other revenues are slowly up or slightly down. I've driven by variables that I will point out in the next couple of slides. Property tax, as I said, is the leading revenue supply for the town in general and particularly in fiscal year two thousand seventeen. We are anticipating the property tax to go by eight-point-nine million dollars or four-point-six percent. Now, this is an important slide because, of course, it, it's a dominant part of our forecast. I'd just like to take you through fiscal year sixteen first to give you a, a starting point in this thing. As you could see in fiscal sixteen, which is the first column there, you see the override of seven-point-six million dollars. And so, you see a subtotal annual levy of one hundred and ninety-five million four thirty-eight. That same number is the starting point of fiscal year seventeen. I, I just wanted to point that out. We, of course, chose in a policy not to use all of the seven-point-six million dollars. So, we deducted the one million four sixty-five from the fiscal year sixteen calculus and left that available for fiscal year seventeen. And it is plugged into the fiscal seventeen numbers. In addition to that, there are a couple of other important parts of this slide. First of all, new growth development. We have been talking for a number of years about three projects that are in the pipeline. One of them was the Red Cab, one of them was Brookline Place, and the third was Circle Cinema. We, we are now finally seeing the fruits of those discussions. We are now finally seeing the fruits of those discussions. In fiscal year '17, we have plugged in a new growth development in addition to our base amount of 1,008 for just general new growth. We plugged in an increase for the Red Cab site of $500,000. In addition to that, you see the line below it, $350,000. As Melissa had mentioned to you, we have a property that was a tax-exempt property, 121A Affordable Housing, which is now converting from a tax-exempt property to a taxable property. And so you're going to see an increase in the property tax for fiscal year '17, but a concurrent reduction in local receipts. And that's one of the reasons why the number for local receipts actually is anticipated to go down at this point for fiscal year '17.
But the net is the same between the two?
No. No, I wish, but it isn't. And in fact, our pilot payment over the last few years actually has been greater than what the value of the property is. And that was a point of conflict with the property and with a negotiated settlement. And so now the property's going totally off of the books. And the reason for that is the law that was created in 1974, when this property was created, this 121A was created, was favorable to the town. The laws have changed since then and it's made it very favorable to the town. And that's why when we flip over to the taxable parcels, we actually end up losing some money in this. Now, continuing on new growth development, you see in fiscal '18 more money. And there's, that is where you see the tail end of the Red Cab site, I think it's about $107,000. And then you start to see for the first time the new growth development coming in for the Brookline Place. In fiscal '19, you really see a great deal of the Brookline Place new growth coming in, I think it's 1.3 or 1.4 million dollars. And again, you have, I believe, the beginning new growth development for Circle Cinema. And finally, in fiscal year '19, you have really the end of both projects. You have Brookline Place for about 570,000 and Circle Cinema for another $100,000 approximately. So that you have a new growth development of 2.4 million dollars. And finally, when those three properties are developed fully, and they're fully on the tax rolls, you see us go back to our constant new growth development estimate of 1.8 million dollars. The one, two other things I'd like to point out in this slide because it is important is in fiscal year '19, you see the net debt exclusion increasing from 1,20,000, which is really the high school, the end of the high school debt exclusion, to the addition of the devotion school property. But again, in fiscal year '21, you see the downturn from 4,440,000 for debt exclusion down to 3,505,000. That indicates that that is the end of the high school debt exclusion. We borrowed it in 20, excuse me, 2001, and it ends in 2021. So where's the 20 you're borrowing? Onto state aid.
So as soon as we pay that one off, we'll be ready to do it again, maybe.
Maybe you'll go for a 10th or 11th school. The more the better. Fiscal year '17 state aid, as Melissa has pointed out, we're anticipating a growth in state aid of about 2.9 million. It's primarily from the state continuing their policy, their goal of bringing all communities to the foundation aid target. Presently, we're at 17% and the target is 17 and a half, and that would mean that we would have an increase of about $400,000 in that line. In addition to that, we have a slight adjustment in the unrestricted general government aid, so the grand total would be 2.9%. This is an old standby state aid chart we do on the forecast every year. Just gives you a little history of where the state aid has gone. In the past, we've used this to beat up on the state to say, you know, you're not giving as much state aid as you used to back in the day, back in 2000. But in the last few years, when the state has plugged us into this policy of foundation aid, we have done well, and it's been tremendously helpful to us in the last few years. And you could see the tick up there in the last 14, 15, 16. Local receipts, local receipts are anticipated to go down. There are a number of reasons for this, but one of them I've already mentioned to you that that pilot slash 121A is going down from 1,300,000 to 890,000. But offsetting that, there are a number of increases in local receipts, motor vehicle excise, building permits, local option tax. So the net is almost revenue neutral. It's a loss of 0.3%. And in the future years, we're anticipating an average annual increase of 1%. That is a typical increase that we have in all of our forecasts. Other available funds, I think Selectman Daily had asked this question. There are two really drivers in this. One of them is the anticipated increase in parking meter receipts from the parking meter rate increase. That is 850,000. But this revenue category goes down by 90,000, and that's primarily because we had in fiscal year '16 a one-time capital project surplus. In other words, money that was left over from other capital projects, we reused in fiscal '16 for capital items. And you can only spend essentially free cash once, and so that revenue goes away in fiscal '17. We did offset some of it by having some growth in the enterprise and revolving funds for overhead charges. That's usually for health insurance and OPEBs and things of that nature.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
The Walnut Hill Cemetery Fund, isn't that a trust fund?
It is a trust fund. We've had a negotiated agreement between the trustees of the cemetery and the town for the cemetery to cover some of the overhead for the costs, very much like the revolving funds covering some of their overhead. In this particular case, I think some of it is for capital, parks and open space.
So it's a transfer from that-
It's a transfer from the cemetery fund into the general fund of the town to cover those overhead charges. The cemetery cost, the budget for the cemetery is in the general fund. So revenue's being taken into the revolving fund, but the expenditures are going out of the general. All right, onto the next revenue, last revenue category, free cash. We had a free cash certification of 7.8 million dollars. This was a little less than we've had in previous years, obviously because of the large snow cost, snow removal cost. We've adopted the same use pattern because we have a policy that really drives how we use our free cash. The first one is to replenish or bring our reserve fund up to 1% of the prior year revenue. Three quarters are being paid for by the property tax and one quarter is being paid for by free cash. The 2.5 million dollars is an amount of money that our policy requires us essentially to leave unappropriated, left essentially in the bank account. And that is intentional so that we could keep our undesignated fund balance above a target amount of approximately 10%. And that strengthens our ability to retain our AAA bond rating. The liability reserve is again a policy. We want to, if, when we use our liability reserve, in the next year, we're required to replenish it up to an amount of 1% of the prior year revenue. And so $144,000 would be required to hit that policy target. Capital improvements, that's the primary use of free cash. There, excuse me, there was some for Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And finally, there was a little bit of money left over at the end that's under special use. The town is able to use that in a number of different categories, mostly for special reserve funds. In this particular way, we've used it again for capital, where a lot of capital demands this year, and Melissa's going to be describing that to you in the next agenda item. My final slide is on the unreserved, the unreserved fund balance, or the undesignated fund balance. Again, we've talked to you about this for a number of years. We had unintended consequences, I guess is the best way to describe it, where we had done, thank you, I have a flu, I'm sorry, I apologize. We had our undesignated fund balance being driven down because we were using all of our free cash. And as a result, you could see over a period of time from about 2007 all the way down to 2010, where it went finally below 10%. And our rating agency, in this case Moody's, was giving us dire warnings that this had to be changed. And so we brought it to the Board of Selectmen and you thought about it and changed the policy to allow us to not spend some of the free cash, just leave it sitting there so that we retain a certain level of target so we could retain our AAA. And that's worked over the last couple of years. In this particular case, the only reason I want to point this out to you is because in fiscal year '15, you see it going down again. It went down to 10.2%. The reason for that is because of the tremendous snow levels that we had this year. It depleted our reserve fund, which usually adds to our free cash. It deleted some or reduced some of our estimated revenues. People couldn't get to the parking meters to use them. I'm not sure that it deleted our liquor license revenue. I think everybody crawled in over the snow banks. But as a result of that snow, we did see a reduction of free cash, our undesignated fund balance. But I want to assure you that all the cities and towns and the Commonwealth face the same thing. It isn't something that was unique to Brookline. As a matter of fact, frankly, because you made the interesting decision to pay for that deficit in the snow in one lump sum rather than spread it over three years, you actually strengthened the financial position of the town going forward, and so you should be applauded for that. With that, I'd like to turn it back over to Melissa for the rest of the discussion.
Okay, so now we're back on the expenditure side of the budget. And so you can see that personnel and benefits make up close to 75% of the operating budget, so it's no surprise that our two cost pressures of collective bargaining and group health are on the expenditure side. And then we also have showing where the costs are in terms of departments. You can see that our school department is our largest and followed by public safety and non-school benefits as well. So in terms of the expenditure summary, we can see that the school budget is going to be growing by 3.58 million. The town side about 750,000. Town and school collective bargaining about 2.8. Benefits about 2.94. And then non-appropriated and the CIP and all others have, show some modest growth. So in terms of benefits, I think I've already discussed the group health assumptions. In terms of pensions, we're following our funding schedule, which will get us to full funding in 2030. I know that we were going to be getting a new actuarial assessment, so I have included an additional bump up in 2018 in anticipation that we very likely will see a truing up of our funding schedule based on the current market. So that's what you see there. So just this-
Excuse me, Melissa, do you want to address Ben's question at some point about the funding basis of both the pension and OPEB at some point?
Sure. Can you-
Steve, maybe you could help with that. The question was relating to, you know, where are we funded? What's the percentage of funding for both pension and OPEB?
The, both pension and OPEB have actuary analysis done every two years. Pension is on a calendar year basis. The OPEB is on a fiscal year basis. The next actuaries for both of them come up in calendar year '16. The pension will be done somewhere between April and June, and the OPEB analysis should be done somewhere by September or October. So we'll have new numbers then. The pension fund at this point in time is about 56% funded, but we have one of the lowest estimated rates of return, which is a good thing. That means that if we do better than the rate of return, we shorten our term to full funding. We are scheduled to be fully funded in 2030. Most cities and towns are at 2040. That's another positive, being conservative. But I have to say that our calendar year to date across the world, the market hasn't been strong. I did read an article today that there was going to be a real, real good recovery in the next 12 days, but I'm not telling that. And as a result of which, Melissa and I have talked about, and I believe we have, inserted a bump in the fiscal '18 number for pensions just to be on the safe side. As far as OPEBs, there's no requirement to pay. We are phasing up to the annual contribution requirement, which is called the ARC. We should be there somewhere around 20, somewhere between 2021 and 2023, although-
That would be, what that means is for a 30-year funding schedule, that would be the point at which we get, we jump on to that 30-year funding schedule. We're not yet putting in enough each year to be on-
Exactly right. As a result of which, what happens is that every time we have an actuary, until we get to the ARC, the 30-year plan rolls forward. Once we get to the ARC, we go 29 years, 28 years, and it starts decreasing until we get to full funding. And so there's no, right now, at this point in time, there's no requirement to pay. But I will say one other thing. There is one revenue source that we have been using as one of the sources for our annual contribution to OPEBs that might be going away, and that's the Medicare payment. So we were just discussing that in the last couple of days. So that schedule that we have is growing, but it might take a pullback a bit if Medicare Parti goes away.
Could I ask a question? How important is our funding schedule to the maintenance of our bond rating? And I know that other cities and towns are not as advanced as we are in terms of the funding schedule, and I'm wondering whether that hurts their bond rating or maybe has no effect at all?
It's very important to the bond rating. What ends up happening is that there are only, I believe, one or two communities out there and maybe one state agency, I think MWRA, that's hit the ARC.
Not my agency, that's Clean Water Trust.
Our rights, two agencies, I apologize.
So I want to make sure that you're-
I said, "I think." But that means that the rest of the retirement, the OPEB systems, the health systems out there, and the government state agencies and local governments are not at the ARC. And when they're not at the ARC, what happens is the difference between what they fund and what they should be funding becomes a liability on the financial statement. And it is, the longer a community continues not funding up to the ARC, the larger the liability grows, and it definitely weakens the financial condition. And that is why it's imperative that communities, all communities and all state agencies throughout the country, get to that ARC.
But we should say, the rating agencies haven't historically been counting it against communities. They have indicated in discussions, Steve and Melissa, I don't know, you've probably been in on those too, that they are starting to consider actually counting that in your bond rating and their analysis. However, you know, if they get to a point where they consider that, only like Wellesley is ahead of us really, and I think in terms of the cities and towns, they passed like a debt exclusion override to fund their OPEBs. So we still look good comparatively by that we are working on it, even though we're not at the ARC yet.
But it's only in the past two or three years that Gatsby's required that we recognize the unfunded liability as a liability on the balance sheet.
2010.
2010, so five years.
So I think we've hit most of the bullets on this slide, so I'll go to the next one. So this just shows the growth in group health, so you can see the year that we entered the GIC, how we were able to bring those costs down, but now-
I don't like that slope.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's sort of ironic that it's steeper than our slope before we entered the GIC.
Yeah, I think, I mean, these are cost pressures that even the GIC is not going to be able to bail us out of at this point. This slide just gives us some of the history on some of the group health changes that we've made to try and bring down some of those cost pressures. Every percentage change in the rates increased our group health appropriation by about $270,000. Every percentage change in the rates increased our group health appropriation by about $270,000. And then I would also want to note that the PEC agreement does expire at the end of this fiscal year. So we will be, and I think conversations have already started with all the various unions about a successor agreement.
Well, I believe we're now among comparable communities. We're at the very high end of our percentage compared to the employees' percentage. Whereas we, you know, and that was a concession we gave to get agreement to go into the GIC. Because we used to be more on the lower end, have I got that right?
I'm not sure what the mix is in terms of the communities that are in the GIC and what their splits are, but I think we are on the high end. So we've touched most of the points about the OPEBs. I just want to point out what Steve was saying earlier about the Medicare Part D. So this is a funding source that I am projecting is going to start declining in fiscal 18. Essentially, what's happening is the revenue source is going away and the plans are supposed to change. So the savings would then be seen in the rates. And I think the Unicare plan is one of the first plans that we're anticipating there'll be a drop off from. As we get more information from the GIC, obviously, we'll continue to fine tune some of these numbers. So this is an illustration of our OPEB funding plan. And we get to the ARC somewhere around 2024, as Steve said earlier. And this is an illustration of our pension funding schedule based on the current actuarial assessment. And we would get to full funding in 2030.
Melissa, can I just ask you, because I noticed that, when is it? Is it 2030 we're supposed to have our pension fund fully funded?
Yes.
Well, it was certainly a recommendation of the OPEB committee that Steve and I served on a number of years ago, that when we get to fully funding the pension system, that the difference would go to OPEBs. And I don't see that reflected on your chart. I want everyone to continue to remember, since by that time neither Steve nor I will be here, that that was the intention and the recommendation. So, you know, in future, I'd like your chart to maybe-
To project that scenario.
Project that.
The one on the left, Nancy, the one on the left.
Yeah. See, in 2030, they're not showing a difference that you would get if you were actually taking the money that had been going into the pension fund and putting it toward OPEBs.
Yeah, we can show, you know, kind of what the current funding plan is and then a funding plan that would have that scenario.
Okay. Want to leave a legacy.
It's good to have some institutional memory.
That's right.
This slide just illustrates some of the cost pressures around group health and pension with regard to consuming most of our increase that we see under Prop 2.5. Just the pure 2% increase that we get from the property tax levy. The next slide just talks about, we'll talk more about it in the CIP presentation, debt service. So in 17, the 6.5, 6% policy, which basically is 6% of prior year net revenue is what is the basis of our CIP. That amount grows by $939,000 in fiscal 17. Some of the projects that Steve and I will be borrowing, Steve's last borrowing in this coming spring, are the rear landfill, the devotion school, a piece of the devotion school, the old Lincoln School, Pierce Playground, and some roof and envelope repairs. In the out years of the CIP, we also have funding for the rest of the town portion of the CIP. The high school project, $35 million of which we were able to fund within the existing capacity. We were able to find some funding for a small HBAC project at the Driscoll School. And we have some roof and envelope repairs and also fire fleet maintenance and park projects that are on this slide. These are, more information will be in the CIP presentation. So this is some people's favorite part of the budget to talk about, the costs that we can't control through non-appropriated and some of the assessments that we get through state and county charges. I'm assuming a 2.5% increase for MBTA assessment and our Norfolk County assessment as well.
How are we, how are we coming along, Mel, on that? Working on getting out from under that county assessment?
I was going to ask you, Nancy. No, I mean, you know, I think we know that there's no easy solution when all the other members of the county think it's great that we're being assessed so much because, you know, it's a zero-sum game there. So unfortunately, I don't see any easy way out at this point in time.
I've got to say, I mean, because we as state tax, income taxpayers are paying the retirement costs for the counties that dissolved. And, but then we are in addition paying Norfolk counties.
Yep.
And so it is patently unfair.
Right, it is.
You know, I know-
I think the home loan petition hasn't gone anywhere.
No, it's not going to go anywhere. You know, Bobby Nabel from the advisory committee has probably more than anybody kind of kept this going. And, you know, we've communicated to other members of the county system. And as I said, you know, to the extent that Brookline pays more, they pay less. And so there's no motivation really to create a more equitable solution. Now, the legislature is a different story, but again, you know, you're dealing with legislators from all over the state, including some whose counties have been abolished. And we're trying to push that equity argument, but I have to say, I don't see it in the near future how we're going to be able to resolve that issue.
Got to succeed.
Succeed from the Commonwealth.
So this is kind of the simplistic way to look at the overall deficit calculation in fiscal 17, where you have operating revenue of 9.65 million. You've got health insurance costs of 1.58. You've got collective bargaining and utility costs and overall expenditure growth of about 10.48 million, resulting in an overall deficit of about $800,000.
And this, of course, doesn't include the ninth school.
Correct. So this last slide also just shows what is essentially a structural deficit in the out years of the forecast in this current year that we'll be grappling with as we dive further into the fiscal 17 budget.
Okay, thank you. But you're up again.
I just, I just want to get back to my question because I think I know the answer, but it was never answered. The extra parking meter revenue going to the schools, was that part of the override study committee's recommendation of?
That was, that was part of the board deliberation and ultimate recommendation for the override funding plan. So that the town administrator had presented an option of some non-tax revenue that would be able to support the school budget in order to provide a lower override number.
Yeah, that was the million, Nancy. And I mean, they didn't say, well, they did make certain recommendations, including the parking meter rate increase. And I supported that, and that was part of our $1 million plan. I will say, and I'm sure Melissa will get into it, is we would not raise the rate of the parking meters unless we were committed to improve the technology associated with many of our meters, which currently some don't even accept credit cards. But I think you'll see us moving pretty aggressively in the pay-by-sell area as well next year.
Okay, so now the next presentation is the capital improvement plan. And our department heads are here eagerly anticipating your questions. So I'm hoping to run through the presentation piece fairly quickly so that you can dive into your projects. So the headline, so we have 155 million CIP from fiscal 17 through 22. One of the things I would like to note is that the debt management plan has been adjusted based on the recent MSBA-
Can I interrupt you for one minute because I see Mr. Sorillo trying to sneak out? And I do want to say that, that I think our long-range planning has been excellent. And happy to see you taking the baton. But I want to give Steve credit because I think he set up a lot of the formulas that we use to go through this process. And I think the town has benefited tremendously, Steve, from your efforts in this area. So I want to thank you.
I'd like to thank all of you for that. I would like to say, however, that for the last number of years, it's been the past deputy and the current deputy who's been doing most of the work on this, and they do a tremendous job.
Jumping back into the CIP. The debt management plan has been revised to account for the change in the devotion school project. We had recently, when we got our project funding agreement, had a different MSBA number than what was assumed in the budget. So I had come in front of this board to ask for some guidance on how to deal with that shortfall. And that shortfall has been addressed within the current CIP. There is $6.3 million for classroom capacity, about $1 million in fiscal 17, and $5.3 million in the out years of the CIP. It is not a lot for carving out classrooms to the extent that we've done in years past. It primarily covers some of the lease costs for some of the space that we found over recent years. I'm carrying the same assumptions that we've used with regard to a high school and a night school. And that is that we have a piece of funding for a portion of the high school. But the night school, there is an assumption that a debt exclusion override would provide funding for that project. Even with the classroom capacity and school pressures, we're able to continue some of the programming that we've done in the towns, parks and playgrounds, fire IT, and other general public works projects. Some of the major projects that you'll see is the $4.5 million fleet maintenance facility over at Fire Station 6. We've got some money for work at Lars Anderson Park. And we've got some work at Brookline Reservoir Park. Erin Gallantine wasn't able to make it this evening, but she did provide a memo that I'm hoping made it to your places that I'll also post online that has further description of some of the park projects. Peter has also been primed for some of it as well. So to the extent that you've got some questions, hopefully between Peter and I, we'll be able to address that for you. And you'll also see that there's $804,000 included in here for a parking meter upgrade. This is the full funding for transferring all of the existing meters into IPS meters. But I'm recommending that the implementation of that program happen over three years because the impact on the operating budget with data storage charges and credit card fees is really significant for DPW. And I think that we should also be cautious when it comes to the success of a potential pay-by-cell phone project as well.
Excuse me, does this money include the money for the pay-by-sell?
So the pay-by-sell number would have credit card service charges associated with it. But the IPS meters have credit card service charges and what's called data storage fees associated with it as well.
Is there any capital expenditure to go to pay-by-sell or is just a service fee to a provider?
We would have to basically increase a piece of the DPW budget to account for it.
It's operating.
Yeah. So these are some of the projects that we've, ongoing investment in the CIP. Some town school envelope repairs, roof repair, information technology, and tree replacement and energy conservation. These are kind of annual funding items in our CIP. So you can see that the school plan in 17 calls for $6.2 million for school investment. We've talked about the classroom capacity line item. I didn't want to highlight that we are also doubling back on the old Lincoln School. There's some additional work that is needed for the electrical system and some plumbing repair as well. You'll also see that there is funding available for the Driscoll School HBAC project, which Charlie can talk a little bit about, the plans to phase that project in and do it so that we are doing it in the summer so we don't have to move kids out in order to accomplish that. So here is the annual investment or the investment in our park system in 17. It's 2.28 million. Some of the projects, I think, that are, have been moving along in recent years. Robinson Playground is one of them. Obviously, some of the news with Brookline Reservoir Park and the changing conditions there in terms of the vegetation and the impacts have caused that project to grow a little bit. And then we have our annual money for town school repair. And the Comfort Station at Lars Anderson is also another project in 17. So the fire department is also seeing the training and maintenance facility money come to fruition in fiscal 17. In addition, the Tower One will be replaced in 17. Originally, that was programmed for fiscal 18. But the Bronto had been breaking down a lot and the chief was able to trade it in. And so that trade-in basically is going to be lowering the replacement cost. So it's a good overall deal for the town. Then this slide just shows some of the other project, public works projects that we have that are coming into the CIP. Gateway East, we've been talking about for several years. And I think that, you know, the bridge came down this past October. And so hopefully, we'll see some additional work with that project as well. The parking meter upgrade, we already discussed. And the annual money that the DPW gets for streets and sidewalks follows the plan to inflate that amount by 2.5% every year. So this chart illustrates the funding for the CIP, which essentially is 6% of prior year net revenue. And then on top of that is free cash, which gets us to 7.5%. So within the 6% number, our target is to try and have 4.5% of debt and 1.5% of tax financed in the CIP. So of the revenue financed CIP, we have $8.9 million worth of projects. Of that, $4.5 million is coming from that 6% policy. And then the other $4.4 million is coming from free cash. So then in terms of debt service, we have debt service number of 13.2 million, 9.6 of which is coming from the 6% policy. One point, a little over a million is coming from the high school debt exclusion override. And then $2.5 million worth of projects in the enterprise, both golf and water and sewer funds. This slide is, should be familiar from the forecast presentation, which just basically shows how the free cash is allocated. So you can see how we get to our $4.4 million number for the CIP. And this is just an illustration of how the 6% policy plus the CIP, plus the free cash works with the overall funding plan for the CIP. This slide just demonstrates the categories of funding available for the CIP, whether it be property tax, free cash, whether it be bond funding, whether it be CDG or other grant funds. This slide just illustrates the category of expenditure, whether it be for a renovation of an existing facility, whether it be a new facility, or park and open space. This slide, you're not going to be able to read either. This is our debt management plan. So it basically shows how we are planning for each of these projects and when we expect the debt service to kick in on each of them. So this next slide essentially shows the existing debt service, which is in the blue. And as that debt service gets paid off and run off, how we backfill it with new projects. And then on top of that are the debt exclusions as well. So this next slide is to illustrate the 6% policy and how it's broken out between debt financed and pay-as-you-go cash. We've been talking for a number of years how the pay-as-you-go component is extremely compressed and under pressure, given the debt service for both the devotion school kicking in in 2018 and then the high school kicking in in 2023. It's going to be a challenge to try and fit projects within this, given, especially when you have free cash as the other component that is, it fluctuates. And then this is just the breakdown of debt service as a percentage of revenue. This will all be posted, it already is posted online now for people who want to take a closer look at the numbers. I know if you have questions, project-specific questions, our department heads-
So the elephant in the room is the project we were talking about earlier this evening, which is the ninth school. And, you know, built in here is one school project, whether it goes to the high school or the ninth school. From a planning perspective, it doesn't matter.
But only, only a portion of it, actually. It's only 35 million.
Right.
Which is only a portion of-
But the other piece that isn't in here is the- But the, the other piece that isn't in here is the um design feasibility schematics. Money to get you to a, a point where you could proceed with the project. So uh, would, would, would that, would that be uh? It's, we're gonna have to spend some of that money to get to a point where we would need to know how much to, to put on the ballot.
Yeah, you mean part of the thirty-five million that's allocated in our debt management plan? We would take money from that or?
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't.
Possibly, yeah.
Right, so there is a potential funding source for that one to two million kind of ballpark range.
I, I think, you know, the discussion earlier this evening I thought was very useful was, you know, this is a project that, you know, all of the, all of the projects have to be considered. And, you know, we have to be flexible about how we, how we proceed. But we have to keep all the projects in mind.
Right. But yeah, and then that.
The school project.
Right, and I, I just didn't want to lose sight that it's not in here. I just wanted to make a note of it and uh. Project, I have a question about, it's, it's a new one that's popped up and maybe, so I'm gonna put the, point the fingle thicker, thickle, finger, fickle finger of fate on Mr. Simmons. For the uh, um Driscoll HBAC project. Can you tell us about that?
Sure, this project would replace the existing heating system. Dates back to nineteen ten. In the middle part of the building and, you know, right section is nineteen twenty-eight. With a section nineteen fifty-three. Suffice to say, I can't find parts anymore. And it's been difficult to keep the heat working over the last number of years. It wasn't the CIP, actually combined with the proposal to expand and renovate the building. As one big project, and that didn't happen. So I'm putting it back in the CIP as a separate project.
Okay.
I have a question about the um, the turf replacement at Craft uh Field. I know it's a couple of years off, but I noticed that there was a.
That's not a Mr. Simmons.
That's not Mr. Simmons, yeah. I have, I have other questions for Mr. Simmons. Are you um, the, the garage repair here at Town Hall Pierce, are you involved in that or?
Yes.
Okay, um, I, cause I know we've been working on this for years. So I was surprised to read that there's a, something needs to be repiped because it's broken.
That's the uh, in the back of the Pierce School, between the library and the Pierce School, the drains that we redone, they go actually through the garage, lower garage. It wasn't part of any of the projects. So we repaired all those. And what we're finding is um, there's water getting underneath the slab in the back of the Pierce School. And if you're in the garage during heavy rainstorm, the water just goes all over the floor. So these are little things as well, three little areas, little, I mean, still expensive that we were gonna just clean up at the end and call it a phase four. Uh, another section is behind the library and a third section is the Pierce School itself.
This is the final phase, right Charlie?
Okay.
I hope so, yes.
It just seems to me like this is one of these ones like single tree water tower that's on here like all the time.
Well, when you, uh, it was a multi-year project, but when you dig up the ground, you find things and then you find more things. You're trying to get to the next phase, what ends up, and we don't want to do changes. We don't have to because they're very expensive.
Okay, so my other question is, I, I see that there's very, going to be very little money for you to do what you've been doing. And creating extra spaces at schools. Um, and so I'm wondering, are you being asked to continue to do that? And, and, you know, how will, what are the costs that are not being funded?
I'm being asked to look with the school department for spaces. Uh, we had a tour last week. And um, the goal would be to use spaces without doing a lot of construction work. A lot of it would be program changes. If the school department was unable to do that, then we'd look at possibly some construction. But as you pointed out, there's not a lot of money to do that.
Since you didn't like my last question, I'm gonna come back with another one that is from Mr. Simmons.
Okay.
Uh, I noticed that there's some money uh proposed to be spent at the old Lincoln School. Uh, I know that we spent about three million dollars there uh last year or two years ago. And that uh, during the course of that work, we discovered that there was some wiring, additional wiring work that needed to be done. I'm wondering if you can sort of walk me through the, the money that we see in this year's uh CIP. Um, and if it includes the wiring work or that's an additional separate expense.
Um, that work was actually valued engineered out way in the beginning. And um, the heating system was valued engineered out and was actually an add alternate. And we did the work actually over the summer with another, another program of money. Uh, working with the wiring inspector and working with the electrician. It would be, it would behoove us to clean up the electrical system. Because in my opinion, we're gonna be down there until I retire. It's not gonna change. And the electrical system down there is safe, but we've just been adding circuits left and right. There's actually two main services, one backfeeds another. It makes the wiring inspector uncomfortable, makes it difficult for me because it's hard to find even a breaker. You have two breakers controlling half of the room. And this would clean all that up once and for all.
Is this a case like uh, as we had in the high school renovation, you know? And when we started doing the analysis in the late, in nineteen ninety-five and ninety-six. And we discovered that there was a, the major, you know, board that controls the circuits in, in the high school went back to nineteen oh-two or something. It was probably built by Thomas Edison himself. And uh, it was har- pretty horrifying and uh.
I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, so is this, this a similar situation?
Well, we don't have, we have some circuits going back to the nineteen thirties, original circuits. And they're safe, but they're old, the insulation's a little dry. And then we have circuits that have been added every time a school or town building was there, we added.
Right.
It was only added as needed. And there wasn't any big master plan because nobody really knew what the plan was. This would clean all that up.
I see.
Any other questions for Mr. Simmons? You're off the hook.
Thank you.
Any uh?
I have a quick question for Mr. Stokes.
Mr. Stokes, come to the, come to the hot podium.
So I noticed in the prior year and the, and the upcoming fiscal year, you had uh, the prior year being the one we're in actually. Two hundred and seventy thousand and then two seventy-five, and then it goes down quite a bit. So why, why, why is it, um, why were these high ones and then it going down?
Uh, good evening, Kevin Stokes, Chief Information Officer. Uh, yes, what, what that ref- uh effectively reflects is that, you know, there is a, a very big trend now in technology to move towards more subscription based services. So the past, you know, certainly during the tenure that I've been here, you know, with the board's uh help and with our financial uh plan that we had in place. We've invested a lot in infrastructure and, you know, to the extent we've largely infi- we've largely modernized the infrastructure. I was actually here in June, I talked about uh, a long-term lease for all of our network equipment, which effectively moved a very large quasi-capital and operating expense purely into an operating lease. That trend is going to continue. And as we've upgraded applications over the last couple of years, the next evolution of those upgrades now will be subscription services. So almost everything we're buying now, whether it's uh traditional network storage or just pure applications, licenses, they're all moving towards more subscription based. So while there is certainly relief on the capital requests, and you'll see that in the out years. There will also be a sort of a corollary uh pressure on the operating budget because those annual uh, in, those annual subscriptions will result in increases, most definitely.
What ki- I, I'm not quite understanding what kind of subscription services?
Everything from email to our document management system, uh to our new permitting system. Every application now, in the good old days so to speak, you could buy a, what's called a site license and buy a license. It didn't matter if you had ten users or a hundred or a thousand. Now uh, uh, most vendors now have moved to a user-based licensing model. And now as you uh move to the next generation, those uh models now are moved to the internet, to the cloud. And you're actually paying, you know, not paying, uh, there's no service and there's no infrastructure by, but you're just paying an annual uh fee based on the amount of people that use that system.
I don't pay anything for Gmail. I'll just throw that out for you to think of a.
Well, but commercial Gmail and uh, your personal Gmail are two different animals.
And, and for the record, the cost of email for what we pay is actually in the archiving and the backups. So we have a, a responsibility for, you know, long-term retention of the emails and, you know, custodian of the information. That's really what the cost is.
I have a question for Mr. Ditto.
Sounds like you're off the hook, Mr. Stokes.
I notice here on page uh thirteen, the uh LED streetlight replacement program. And I know that that's designed to save us money in the utilities budget. Um, I want to know what your experience is and whether, uh, how, how the program is going and whether uh, maybe Charlie has to answer this, I don't know. Uh, whether it is actually saving us the money we thought it would.
Okay, um, as you know, we're installing those with Town Forces.
Pardon me?
We're installing the new lights with Town Forces.
Yeah.
Kevin has one crew almost full-time doing that. Um, we have approximately thirty-six hundred lights in town. Of which, um, can't quote me in this, I believe we have about half of those installed at this moment. Um, this week I received a check from uh EverSource for ninety-one thousand dollars. And that's our rebate, first application we put in for uh, that rebate. Um, and that represented about eight hundred and forty lights that we installed. So we probably get another three or four uh requests in for rebates from EverSource. Um, as far as I know, the lights have, have worked fine. Uh, some of them have, we've gotten complaints where they've been a little bit too bright. So we reduced the wattage and that seemed to solve the situation. But um, I think Kevin anticipates having these completely installed by um, summer of two thousand and sixteen.
So then we should really be able to, we should really begin to realize the savings in the budget.
Yeah, I, I think we're in a little bit of a gray area right now as far as trying to figure out what the savings and wattages are. I think once we get up around eighty and ninety percent complete, then we can get a feel for what we're gonna be saving.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I actually had a question on the same project. Somebody this week sent me, forwarded to me some, something about how you could put sensors on your LED lights and save even more money. So in other words, the light would go dim when there were no cars on the street or something. I don't know though, I don't know, how could a sensor account for pedestrians walking down the street or something like that?
Yeah, these were, these were act- controls. We actually, um, when we went out to bid for the LED lights, we included that. And um, it came in at a very, very outrageous price. And um, it, it just didn't seem, seem like the right thing to do at that time. But the lights we bought has the ability of putting those sensors in and actually controlling the light level from either the municipal service center or the, or the town hall. Still looking at that as an option, but I think it's down the road always.
Are, are you handling all DPW uh questions since you're here?
If I have to, yeah.
Well, this Single Tree Hill is always on here. Like, I swear to God, they say we only do it every ten years or something, but this thing is on here.
Mr. Russell's here.
Mr. Russell's here, okay. This thing is constantly on here, we spend more money on Single Tree than.
Haven't spent anything on Single Tree since I've been here. So there's actually two projects on there for the Single Tree tank. One is the painting of the exterior of the tank, which was, I believe, I think previously in the budget about three years ago. But um, when we actually called the company to, to assess whether or not it needed to be painted, they said it was in good condition, so we could push that off slightly. So it's every seven, seven to ten years, we were at year seven, and we've now pushed it to year ten. So we will be painting the exterior of that tank this year, well, in FY six, uh seventeen. The other project is the Single Tree Gate House, which is a new project. The gate houses sits adjacent to the actual tank and is basically a granite building that houses all the controls for the tank. Um, what we're doing is we're, and, and one of the things that got my attention is the, the um, the panel, the electrical panel has the screw-in type fuses. That date back to the nineteen fifties, so. And um, the MWRA actually has a skater system up there which controls the levels of the tank that had plastic over it because the roof was leaking. So um, we're basically gonna rehab that entire building and put some state-of-the-art electronics in it so that we can monitor that tank from down at Glen Woods Road, so. There's two projects on that, so. This is the first money that I've spent on Single Tree tanks since I've been here.
Okay. Um, so Mr. Ditto, I don't, I don't know if this would be you or Mr. Viola, the um, um Gateway East. How long is it going to take um to actually do the work there? And is the, you know, how much disruption is there going to be to traffic um going through there?
Um, I'd estimate um, year and a half to two years, construction's uh schedule. Uh, it will be disruptive for traffic.
You'll have all the marijuana users trying to get through that intersection.
Plus the uh, Brookline Place is going, the construction for that is going to be going on.
Yeah, simultaneous.
Around the same time. And then there's also the uh Riverway uh pedestrian bike improvements, which are the same time or?
Uh, I hope, we should be out of, out of, out of this, we should be out of the way before.
Oh, really?
The E starts, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, we're gonna go out to bid. We're actually advertising um next week for that, that crossing. And we hope to start early in the spring, late winter.
Wow.
So it should be done by next summer at the latest.
Yeah, and there's uh, the plans for that, there, there's a hotel being proposed uh on the corner. The uh, the developer has already sent out a letter to a butters, so there's uh, I would hope there's some coordination with that a little bit.
Yeah.
I'd like to.
Yeah.
I'd like to follow up on that. Um, so there's clearly gonna be some, a lot of street work in that area. And I'm wondering um, what kind of uh gas leaks we have, uh do we know?
Um, the gas company's been down there quite a bit over the last three or four years. So I know that they recognize that they uh, they have problems in that area and they've been addressing them. However, I think they still have some more work to do on a gas line that runs up over the bridge and up uh, out of the street. So yeah, there is work to be done in the gas main.
So that will be taken care of at the time that we're ripping up the streets?
Yeah, that has to be complete before we go in.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we stay on top of this issue because we've been hearing in the climate action, Selectman's Climate Action Committee, the, you know, the significance of these leaks. Uh, and Brookline is way up at the top of the list in terms of, of leaks and number of leaks that we have in, in the state. Uh, pipe, it's no wonder our pipes are old and apparently when, they used to be put together with cork. And that cork has dried out and that's one of the reasons we get those leaks. So um, you know, I just want us to stay on top of it. Thank you.
So I see there's a, a proposed expenditure for Winthrop Pa- uh Path uh in FY seventeen. Uh, we spent some money earlier today on Winthrop Path. I'm wondering if you can uh, help me figure out how the two expenditures uh interlock.
Yep. The um, uh money you approved earlier tonight was for emergency repairs. There was uh, there was some of the, like I said, thirty stairs that were, the noses were knocked off, so we did a patch on those. But while we were doing that, we noticed that there's some hairline cracks that were starting to show. And I'm sure over the wintertime, they're gonna uh grow quite a bit. So you, you can see that there's more work has to be done on that path and that's what that sixty, sixty-five thousand or whatever it is, is for.
Do, um, do you know anything about the Brookline Reservoir Gate House Roof? It's item forty-three on page eighteen of the listing of projects.
Um, you got me on that one.
Okay. Does the planners know anything about that? No, it's, it's a historic building, so.
That's an Erin, Erin thing, I think.
Can anybody answer my question about the reason for the cost increase to Craft Field resurfacing? Why it went from seven hundred to nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars? It's not a FY seventeen project, but it's certainly something that. It's not a FY seventeen project, but it's certainly something that...
I believe some of that is inflation, but some of that is an assumption of changing the synthetic turf. But I can provide you more detail on that.
Been having some ongoing dialogue about the technology or the evolution of the, these fields and the infill material and so...
We're, and on the Devotion School project, we're probably going to the coconut instead of the...
Instead of the chrome rubber?
The chrome rubber.
So I'm sort of, yeah.
Because just, there's some, there are, there are some indications that there may be some long-term health effects.
Without taking a position on whether there are health effects or not, I just want to get a sense of what the potential li, future liability is by making that change. And it looks like, based on the answer that Ms. Skov gave and, and the information you provided, it's about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in increased costs potentially by moving away from chrome rubber, or chrome rubber to coconut or some other type of source. And two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars is a lot of money. Again, I'm not taking a position on whether it's warranted or not, I just want to know what the, what the impact is.
Well, I'm, I'm not really involved in Craft Field, I am involved in the Devotion School project. And I can tell you, we've had a sort of vigorous debate about it, but there is some, and there've been, you may have seen NBC Evening News has been running some stories about sucker goalies in particular getting cancer. And people feeling that there may be an association with, none of that is proven yet. But we've decided at Devotion, we haven't made a final decision, but I think the direction we're heading in is that particularly for a field that's going to be used every day by very young children, we wanted to err on the side of caution.
I applaud that decision. I, I think that, you know, that chrome rubber is made from old tires and it's lots of material, lots of toxic things in it and...
Right. I mean, it's stuff that you can't even put like in a landfill. And yet, they're using it to make the field, so.
I, I think, Selectman Franco, that we probably want to have Aaron address that. I, I'm not really sure that that, that cost increase is representative of, of, of that particular feature. There's some component of that, but she's really done her research on that. So we'll definitely learn more about that before that project is, is appropriated.
Any other questions? I'd like to try and move on, we still have licensing.
Um, I, I, I need to talk about Devotion a, a little bit. And maybe Mary Ellen wants to join us at the podium for this. We had a discussion at the Devotion School building meeting the other morning. David Pollak, a school committee member, was, we are now anticipating a little less revenue back from the MSBA on the project than we had originally hoped for. Partly due to the rate, but partly also due to things that they keep saying, no, you can't get reimbursed for this. So you, you see on here that Devotion School is down for...
Nancy, if you, if I might kind of fill in some of that.
Yeah, okay.
So the, the current funding assumptions for the Devotion School have been adjusted to reflect the most recent MSBA reimbursement. Obviously, the project is still changing, so that we know that it's very likely that the level of reimbursement, we typically don't get the maximum grant when we get a grant award from MSBA. So to the extent that there are some changes to the project that have an implication on the rate, that was, the, the conversation that we were having is how does that shortfall get made up? And the options that are available are, you either value engineer, you either take some existing CIP capacity from somewhere else, or there's the debt exclusion as well. The board has already expressed their position on the debt exclusion to the extent that they can hold that. I mean, I, I've just raised some caution that this project is still going to provide a lot of pressure if the CIP is the area where people want to try and balance out any differences between what we're assuming for reimbursement.
But what I want from this board is some discussion of this issue again because David's point was that we've been talking about this as a slightly over one-hundred-and-twenty million project all along and that's what we submitted to the MSBA and everything. And now you'll see on our listing of projects here, it's down as a one-hundred-and-eighteen million project.
Nancy, sorry, there is an additional appropriation of one-point-seven-five million, which is the feasibility study. So the combination of the construction cost plus feasibility gets you to the one-twenty.
Okay, okay, so then I'm, I'm losing the, um...
So the, you, you...
David was suggesting that we were, be, due, due to MSBA shortfall, that we were actually lowering the entire cost of the project. Are you saying that is not the case?
No, so we're anticipating that with the change to the, the project, we're making it where the kids are off-site, that we very well are impacting our MSBA reimbursement level again. And how do we make up that difference? That was the kind of conversation.
Yeah, so I think you're right. I think there is, there is a factor that's resulting from decisions around the school that is reducing the effective rate of the MSBA. And that's what David's talking about. It is, it is impacting the, the project.
The project cost is the same, but the town share is growing.
Right.
So, and it's grown by approximately two million dollars, right?
Well, I think that that's something that Tony and our architect are still trying to work through, the, the new estimate for MSBA reimbursement. So I think it's a little too soon to say.
So then the question is, okay, how do we handle the additional two million dollars? That's in the, that, that's going to be the town share. So our share is growing.
Right.
But...
So I was suggesting to the committee that we needed to value engineer to bring that down. David was saying, we've, this has always been a one-hundred-and-twenty million dollar project, so we should get this out of the debt exclusion override, which...
Well, that's one approach, but we promised the voters, we, we put a number, you know, legally, you know, we could do that. But when we went to the voters, we made a promise that your taxes go up by a certain percentage. So it seems to me that if, if, if we don't honor our promises, the next time we go to the voters and make certain promises, we'll have no credibility.
This board took up that question before. I'm more than happy to have another conversation about it. But I will tell you, right now, I'm inclined to agree with Chairman Wajinski and am not looking to increase the debt exclusion amount.
Okay. His, his point was that we had presented to the voters that this was a one-hundred-and-twenty million dollar project.
We presented to the voters a tax increase of one point, whatever it is percent.
Okay, so can I just ask that you, that you polled the board so I can go back to the committee and tell them what is the sense of the board?
But we did. In coming up with our number, we, we put in some cushion. Okay, so the question is, have we used the cushion?
And the answer is yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And what, how, how, where exactly did, I want to make sure I get this right so I can...
So the board may recall from last year's CIP discussion that an additional five million was moved out of the CIP and onto the debt exclusion. So that freed up five million dollars of capacity. Two million of that has been used to true-up based on the revised MSBA reimbursement from this project funding agreement letter. The additional three million dollars is how we were able to find funding for the Driscoll School HVAC project.
Okay, so it's Driscoll taking the, the money away. Okay, can you just ask all the board members to comment so I can go back and report to my committee?
Okay, I'll, I'll poll the board, I, you know where I stand.
I will, I'll, I'll state for the record that I do think it's important to keep one's promises to the voters. And I want to stick with that. We need to figure out how to do that. I think the, it's true, the project is, is costly, but there may be, hopefully, down the line. Obviously, moving the kids to, to the leased site and not having them on the, on the site itself, I understand that's going to save us in the long run, right?
No, it, it actually costs us a little bit more.
But we're going to get this...
We're going to get some savings back from it. It's costing us a little bit extra, we thought it was worth it in terms of safety and, and, you know.
And having the project finished sooner will give us other benefits, so that's where I am.
Okay.
I don't think they really add, I'm, I'm with Neil, our chairman, Wajinski.
Okay. Okay, very good. I will report back to my committee that the board has discussed this once again and feels the same way. I mean, we actually have some...
Our position hasn't changed.
Yeah, we actually, there is some value engineering we can do and I, I don't even think it's really terribly painful in terms of the quality of things at the, at the...
Yeah, I, I, I just think it's important that, you know, we have a history as a town. When we go to the voters, we represent how the money's going to be spent, how much we're going to raise. And I, I think we, if, if we, if we ever have another shot at an override, we, we need to, I think, have a history of credibility with our promises.
Okay. We're having another meeting, I think, Monday morning again, right? So I will...
Okay, are we done for now with our CIP discussion? Thank you, Melissa, and thank you all the other department heads who stayed this late and gave us the information we needed. So this is the end of year licensing exercise and we have a number of categories of licenses that are, that we're looking to renew. How, how, this is my first time doing this, so how, how do we, how do we do this?
Well, I would suggest you just take it by each category and, you know, you can reference the list that's, that's associated with the schedule on, on each category. I think, you know, you could just reference this, this list as opposed to, you know, reading them all off. But to the extent that on your cover memo, you'll see some conditions or some other issues, you, you should address those in your vote. But I, I wouldn't necessarily have to read off every single licensee.
Right, okay, so, Mr. Kleckner, you keep me honest and make sure I do what I need to do. So the first category is the coin-operated amusement licenses, and there are only, what, two of those? And the police department has reviewed the establishments and there are no issues there. There are no other departmental issues. Any comments from board members? Therefore, I'll move that we renew the licenses, the two thousand and sixteen coin-operated amusement licenses as referenced in the attachment provided to us labeled page ten dash three. All those in favor, Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Okay, the next category will be not as easy. This is the two, two thousand and sixteen Common Vitular license renewals. And...
Have the three establishments that have fire problems been resolved?
Not yet, so you should place a condition on the approval, that they must be resolved before the license would be issued. And then there's a similar issue, every now and then we'll have one establishment that doesn't make their application in time. And so we recommend that the board, assuming that they do submit their license with a, with a late fee, that you approve it.
Okay, so I'll, any discussion? Okay, therefore I'll move that we renew the licenses in the list, which begins on page ten dash ten and goes through ten dash forty-one.
These are the Common Vitular.
Common Vitular licenses with the following exceptions, which will have conditions that, that they complete the fire department inspection successfully. And, and, and those are fourteen Harvard Street, Matt Murphy, two thirty-nine Harvard Street, Fo' Lemon Grass, and ten twenty-six A Commonwealth Avenue, Pan Roma. Plus, three Harvard Square, Baja Betty's Burritos, hasn't renewed their license yet, so I will move that we remove the license subject to the filing of all appropriate paperwork with a fifty-dollar late fee.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure I understand the conditions on, on the Matt Murphy's license, the Fo' Lemon Grass license, and the Pan Roma license. I believe that the Matt Murphy's license, we, it's a condition that the fire department has asked us to put on, that they provide evidence that they've corrected the fire alarm issue. The Fo' Lemon Grass and the Pan Roma issues, I believe, are the building department condition having to do with evidence that they've serviced their suppression hoods. Is that correct?
I stand corrected, and the condition would be described on page ten dash five. Thank you for the correction, Selectman Franco. So the motion is on the table. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Okay, the next category is entertainment licenses. And there are no objections from any departments. And this is for the entertainment license renewals on the list, starting on page forty-three, ten forty-three, and ending on page ten sixty-eight. Any discussion?
I'd like to ask a question. Have there been any complaints from neighbors about any of these entertainment licenses? And if so, where would the complaints have been lodged?
It says, it says on the cover sheet that there have been no objections filed regarding the renewal of these licenses. Usually we get it, a notice of it.
Well, it's a little different from, from the, that's a little different from the objection to the license renewal. Some people might not know that, that that's the issue and they, maybe last February, they complained about loud music and I'm just asking...
Well, if, if the department, the departments keep track of them. And so if there are any in the preceding year, they'll, they'll mention them here. So I, I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, usually we've gotten notice of all problems because the different departments take a look at these before we...
Yeah, and you'll see evidence of that kind of tracking in the next category.
Okay.
So I will move renewal of the entertainment licenses on the list, starting ten, on page ten forty-three through ten sixty-eight. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The next category is food vendor license renewals. And there are some issues here. On page ten seventy-two. Okay, no, there, there have been no issues.
No.
Okay, so there was, there was some safety hazards that have been corrected. And therefore, this is from the police. And I don't see any other departmental objections. Yeah, I, I did receive a communication from a town meeting member, Clint Richmond, about suggesting that we use our, the licensing process to, um, excuse me, require food vendor licenses to serve water. And I, I got this, I guess, yesterday and I've spoken to Alan Balsam, Director of our Health Department. And he's, he's, oh, he, um, the department, they want to have some internal discussions, but I, he was of the feeling that we need to have some process, we, we can't just impose it.
That's what I wondered, if legally, without giving people notice, if we can put something on there.
Uh, he didn't think it was fair to do it without notice. And he's going to be talking with Pat Maloney. And he, he's thinking of having some process going into the spring.
I would also think it requires a public hearing.
Yeah, I think that, I, what I understand is he may be attempting to do this on administrative, you know, board and health regulatory scheme, which probably does require a public hearing as opposed to the board imposing it as part of their licensing conditions.
Are there any issues or problems that have been identified, except to...
Um, Mr. Clint, Mr. Richmond has found a few food vendor establishments that don't serve water.
They don't serve tap, free tap water is what he wants, not...
Which was not required, as I understand in the original town meeting law.
Correct.
He's suggesting that we, that was an oversight, and we take care of it.
I understand. I think we, and as I understand, the Health Department is intending to do so.
Right, but through an orderly process with stakeholder input and not just imposing it by fiat.
Okay.
So...
So do we want to do these food vendor licenses for only six months or something, to see if that needs to be addressed?
Yeah, I don't think so. Just do it, and, you know, Mr. Balsam has assured me he's going to look into it and move forward on it, and figure out a way, the best way to move forward. So I will move approval of the food vendor licenses in the list, starting on page ten seventy-three and ending on page ten seventy-nine. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. The next category is inholder license renewals, and there are two. Is it two? Yeah.
Soon to be more.
Soon to be more. And the two are listed on page ten eighty-five, and there have been some police service calls, but not anything out of the ordinary in both sites. And the police department is not concerned. It's not, it's not out of the ordinary. So they have no objection. None of the other departments have any objections. Any other questions, comments on these particular licenses? Therefore, I'll move approval of the 2016 inholder license, licenses listed on page ten eighty-five. All those in favor, Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next category is liquor licenses, and here we have, we do have some issues. I know Selectman Franco wanted to speak about a couple.
Yeah, I wanted to move that we hold two of these liquor license applications and invite the applicants in for a conversation next week to get an update on their operations and to have them address some of the issues that were raised in the police department's memo to us. And the restaurants, I'm going to move that we hold the license renewal for are Golden Temple and Gakuya. The police department has noted that, in the case of Golden Temple, there's a lack of alternate managers on the application, and that the manager of record can't possibly be at the restaurant the entire time that it's open and serving alcohol, which is a violation of our regulations. In the case of Gakuya, the current manager of record actually is not in the state right now, is running another restaurant out of the state, and is no longer participating in the day-to-day operations of the restaurant. So just want to invite both of those establishments in to learn a little bit more about their plans for the coming year and how we can work together to maybe rectify some of the issues that the police department is raising concerns about.
Now, you're referring to Ukaku?
It's page ten ninety-one.
Page ten ninety-one, ten oh five Beacon Street, right?
Correct. I apologize, I...
Right. Okay, so we would withhold the license until they appear before us and can talk to us. Is that appropriate?
To be clear, you know, if you are going to impose conditions or consider not renewing the license, you would have to hold a special hearing, of which we don't have enough advanced notice. So this is an alternative, just to have a dialogue. Bring them in, and I'm thinking that's going to be a fruitful exercise for the board. I would also point out that there is another license that's being renewed, kind of a strange one, as you may recall. MJ Ready already has gone out of business, and there's a new Common Vitular in that location, but they asked to retain the liquor license until they could actually affect the transfer of the liquor license. That has not happened despite our letter to them.
Yeah, I find it inappropriate for somebody who's out of business to be applying for the liquor license. I think this is, I mean, these businesses use this as a way to hold up the new person that comes into their space.
So I would suggest we have him in as well, and if...
Well, I think we should have, contact the new...
They don't have a liquor license. They, so liquor service is not...
But they wanted to apply for one.
They want to eventually transfer, no, they have not applied for a transfer of the liquor license.
Says the applicant indicated they were waiting for paperwork approval from the state level.
I think that probably meant tax, you know, issues. So they haven't even, they haven't even applied yet. So I think it might be a good idea to call one or the other in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
And have that dialogue.
I don't see why we should grant a license to somebody who's out of business to renew their license or something. The other guys can apply, and we'll consider that.
Well, I mean, that came up a few months ago, and you agreed to give them some more time, and here we are at this point, and they haven't done it yet.
So we, didn't we, wasn't the time extension like till November?
No, that was a different one.
A different one?
No, you didn't, I don't believe you created a time constraint here, but you might want to do that.
So it seems, should we do it, we have them, should we have them come and see what they say?
I would.
And then at that point, we can decide?
I think so. I think in the same spirit as bringing the upper two in.
Okay, so...
Well, if they transfer the license to a new owner, what type of review this new owner do we have, do we do?
We do the, we do the whole thing. That's why, I don't know, just...
Basically, the same as them getting a new license.
Well, it's basically, it's taking a slot, there are limited slots, right? Limited licenses and just...
Yeah, but it's also a way for MJ Ready, who's already out of the business, to force these, the guys that took over his space, to pay him money, because he will then say, I'm transferring the license to them. It's one of the things people do that I don't really feel is terribly appropriate. And if you're going to do it, you should actually do it in a timely manner, so we don't, you know, we're not sitting here discussing it.
Well, let's have a conversation next week, invite them in for a conversation, and we'll find out what's going on and why there's been a delay, and we can go from there.
Okay, so I will move approval of the liquor license renewals, with the exception of MJ Ready.
It sounds like Golden Temple, too, as having issues.
That was one of the...
Golden Temple and Gui Kaku, that's the, the two, the two businesses listed on page ten ninety-one.
What about Zaptig's and Gimbel's Liquor? Are those the same thing?
Meeting was held, meeting was attended. The matter has been resolved. Zaptig's has been resolved.
Okay.
And Gimbel's, they're both in, two teams are summoned, and they're charging. And there's a proceeding at the licensing board on Gimbel's, so that's in their purview.
Is that ABCC, you mean?
That's what, to the, to the license.
Yeah, that must be the ABC thing.
And a report was submitted to the licensing board, charging Gimbel's with selling, furnishing alcohol to someone under twenty-one.
I think we have to wait for that ABCC process, and then we can, we can always revoke the license or create, create that conditions.
Or just note it on the record for, should a future violation occur, we can take it into mind when we make decisions to have disposive or...
Do we do that now, or do we wait for the ABCC?
We wait for the ABCC to make finding on that.
There's a due process adjudication process there. So I'll be referencing the licenses listed, starting on page ten ninety-five and going through ten one eighteen. I've already noted the exceptions. There are three exceptions here. MJ Ready, Golden Temple, and ten ninety-one. Gui Kaku. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The next category is lodging houses. We're almost done. And it looks like all of the lodging houses passed inspection, indicated, okay, so...
So we should, we should approve these with the condition that they received their, you know, passed their inspections by the end of the year.
Okay, so there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten properties. Do I need to read them?
You can refer to the memo if you want.
Okay, so I'm...
I think it's all of the, it's all of them, I think. No, 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 I see. It's not all of them, sorry.
I'm wondering if, on page ten one twenty-four, there's a list of four properties. This is the memo from back in July. I'm assuming that all the issues have been taken care of?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'll verify that, and if there's a problem, I'll bring it up next week, but I believe that is the case.
Mr. Simmons isn't here, it's like freezing earlier.
Yeah, really? It got hot in here.
There's something wrong with the thermostat, Mr....
I've already complained, and I'll be so...
Oh, my God.
Thermostat's broken.
It's like they want this meeting to end. So let's move along and end it. So I will move approval of the licenses on, for the properties listed on page one twenty-one, ten dash one twenty-one, and ten dash one twenty-five through one thirty-six, with the exception of the properties listed on page one nineteen. And for those properties, there should be a condition that they are inspected and passed the inspection from, by the appropriate department.
By the end of the year.
By the end of the year.
By...
By December twenty-second.
Why don't you just say by the end of the year, in case that...
Thirty-first, yeah.
Yeah.
Because we're not meeting again after...
Right. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And the last category is second-hand...
We're not, we're not going to meet on the twenty-ninth, no.
No, we're not meeting on the twenty-ninth.
No, but what's next week? Is it the...
Twenty-second.
Yeah, so that's what I was...
These are the second-hand motor vehicle class one and two licenses on pages...
One forty-two.
Two through one forty-five.
I did talk to Swanson Automotive today, and they're, the owner has been in the hospital, so that's why they were...
Oh, really? That's too bad.
Late in filing, but they are, told me they were...
They're not going out of business?
No.
Good, okay.
And I believe that they still want to have the second-hand motor vehicle license. I don't know, they called Brenda, I suggested they needed to communicate.
There's a condition here that would allow them to do that if they paid, if they filed for the end of the year and paid the late fee.
Okay, so the condition there is that we renew it, subject to filing of the paperwork and a fifty-dollar fee, late fee. So all those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And now, we've gone through the license renewals, and now we have board and commission's appointment for the Economic Development Advisory Board. Mr. Kleckner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Economic Development Advisory Board is up for your consideration this evening. There are four expiring terms. Each of the four incumbents have expressed interest in reappointment, and we also have an additional applicant. So I will read them in order, beginning with the incumbents. You should vote for four only. Susan Houston?
Aye.
Carol Levin?
Aye.
Anne Myers?
Aye.
Alden Rain?
Aye.
Russell Sidle?
Aye.
So the incumbents, Houston, Levin, Levin, Myers, and Rain are appointed for renewed appointment for three-year terms.
Okay, that concludes our business for Tuesday, December fifteenth. Thank you.